Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting that's going to deal with the capital and parking budgets of November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. So I'll call the meeting to order, and the first item I have is disclosures of pecuniary interests. Is there anyone that has a disclosure? Uh, Mr. Mayor?
No, Chair, I don't have any.
Okay, then I'll make my own. Um, CS two thousand and twenty five fifty nine. It's under Municipal Works. The project name is Montrose Road and Bigger Road Reconstruction, Land Acquisitions, and my family and I own property that is affected. Now, I'll give this to our clerk.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So the next item on the agenda is the deputations and presentations. So I'll ask our acting clerk if we have any deputations.
Uh, first up, uh, Chair, we are going to be addressing the two thousand and twenty six mayor's, uh, proposed parking budget.
Okay, great. So under three point one, we have CS two thousand and twenty five sixty, which is the proposed mayor's budget. And is there a staff member that will be presenting this? Ms. Clark, hello?
Thank you. Okay, through the chair, we're going to talk about the mayor's proposed two thousand and twenty six, uh, parking budget. We're just going to start with a quick look at the five-year history of actuals. So you can see on the right-hand side there, two thousand and twenty one and two thousand and twenty two were still largely affected by COVID. Uh, we were in a deficit position in those years, six hundred and sixty seven thousand, uh, in twenty one, and then a little bit better at two hundred and eleven thousand and twenty two. Fortunately, those years, we were able to get a safe restart grant that, um, offset this deficit. And then you can see coming out of COVID, we have been able to flip, uh, into a positive position with the surplus in the last, uh, two years, and we're trending towards a, a smaller but still positive surplus this year at sixty three thousand, uh, at the end of Q three. Just talking quickly about the asset management. So the asset management plan indicates that we should be spending about two hundred thousand dollars a year in parking. Uh, the parking budget's not quite strong enough to handle a transfer of two hundred thousand a year yet, but we were able to increase that transfer to capital special purpose reserves from fifty thousand to sixty five thousand in the two thousand and twenty six proposed budget. So that is a good news story, even though, um, we're still a little bit short. And we do, uh, we do still spend the amount we need to spend in parking. It just means we have to supplement that with other revenue sources like O L G, for example. Having a quick look at the revenues, um, here, there's really not a lot of change in the parking budget overall. You can see at the bottom, it's going up three thousand dollars or point two percent, um, really minimal change. The, it does flip, but you can see we did reduce the user fees. Uh, we're noticing a decline in user fees recently. Uh, we're not entirely sure why. We're speculating perhaps higher go train usage and, um, potentially less, less tourists driving over the border. But, uh, on the flip side, we were able to increase the fine budget, uh, by thirty three thousand and permits and license, licenses by twenty three thousand. So that results in just a net change of a, an increase of three thousand dollars overall in the revenues. Flipping over to the expenses, uh, we do have a decrease in salary and wages, but, um, that's as a result of one of the customer, or one of the parking clerks was transferred to the new customer service, that your service Niagara Falls. So that's come out of the labor, the salaries and wages for parking. But you will see down the very last line there, internal transfers. There is a transfer back, an indirect transfer back of costs from customer service into parking. So although we lost that clerk and, and we're down thirty seven thousand in salaries and wages, we are increasing thirty thousand in internal transfers with that indirect, uh, cost back from, from customer service. Other than that, small increase in contract services. This is just a, an inflationary increase in the commissioners, uh, and just really minor change in, in materials and rents and financials. Just a quick look by cost center. We're not going to go through this in detail, but that shows you, um, all the various lots, uh, down below. And on the next slide, you can see most of them are in a surplus position. The, uh, two lots that are in a, a deficit position, City Hall, um, frankly, City Hall now i- is not really for the public. It's, it's mostly been staff and, um, city vehicles in that lot. So that represents mostly the snow plowing costs, and we might be removing this lot in the future from, uh, Paul's budget since it's not really a revenue earning lot and moving it into the city lot, the, sorry, the city budget. These recommendations are also in the report, so we can flip over to the report, but, um, I'll just go over them. So the report recommends that we receive the budget. It totals the one point six million. And then moving into the strong mayor recommendations, uh, that would be the time that, um, we would call for any potential amendments. I haven't received any from council, so there, unless there are any on the fly, I'm not aware that there will be any amendments to the capital budget. And if there are none, if council's satisfied that we have, um, looked at all our possible amendments, the request would be that we shorten the thirty-day review period. So as a reminder, under the Strong Mayor Act, um, the, the clock starts on that thirty-day review period once we publish the budgets. In this case, the parking budget was published November tenth, so that review period goes until December ninth, unless council, uh, makes a motion to shorten that period, at which time then the budget would be deemed adopted once that period is closed. So that is our, uh, request for parking, and we can probably flip over to the motions in the report now.
Here, let me see if there's any questions first. Are there any questions? And Ms. Clark, Councilor Newisteg?
Uh, thank you, um, Councilor Peter Anshel. Um, do we go through an analysis as to why there is a difference, like what's caused the, um, the very variance for the two? Like, I see there's two that show a significant variance. Do we examine that to figure out why?
Through, uh, through the chair, do you mean between the, the specific lots?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Like the surplus deficit, exactly. So
Yep.
Like, for example, um, the Kitchener Victoria, that's down sixteen point nine percent. Is there, like, an explanation for that, or?
Yep. So Mr. Brown's here, Paul, from our, uh, parking department, and he can speak to that. But certainly Paul and I discussed this. He adjusts based on the trends that he's seeing in the lots, um, as well as any, um, trends in, in increased user fees or permit fees.
Through the chair. Yeah, if you look at the lots directly, Lot eighteen, Kitchener Victoria, Lot four, at Allen Avenue, Lot twenty and five, all of them were directly related to those heavy tourist areas. So we found that there was a, a downswing in the amount of purchases we're having. Um, we also did deal with a lot of, um, issues with unhoused being in, in the parking lots, causing some discomfort for public. So it did shift where people were parking, and we worked really hard to rectify that. So we believe we'll be in a much better spot come two thousand and twenty six.
Uh, through you, um, councillor. Um, so that, that seems to me that it's because the unhoused. So are they actually taking out spots? So we're not able to get the revenue for those spots?
No, what we did find, we were having large groups of people that we were trying to manage to remove from the lots. But then if you're looking at a family-oriented scenario and you're pulling in and see a large group of individuals that are encamped on the spot, uh, they tend to choose other places to park.
Yep. Okay, that makes sense. So we will be, so we're addressing that.
Absolutely.
Also, I just noticed even at that, uh, Kitchener, um, the Victoria one, there's a lot of unused space there. Like, is that something we, because if we can look at parking as being a good revenue source, should we not be making, um, every spot available?
Yes, there's intentions and there's plans for doing some expansions on that lot. We reviewed that property, and we just recently acquired it within the past year or so from, uh, the MTO. It's now become part of our property, and it is being reviewed on what's the best methods of us utilizing that property in a longer-term period. Yeah.
So we can have that. Um, okay, so that's one. Now, the Lundie's Lane, is that also the decrease in Lundie's Lane due to the unhoused people being in that spot as well?
Lundie's Lane, uh, it's a lot that we, how do I explain this one? Uh, Lundie's Lane, it's, it, it doesn't have a high volume of use overall. Uh, we ended up kind of classifying it as, um, uh, e- extra property that parking wasn't used. It went over to Municipal Works for expansion of the, um, cemetery development that was going to go there. Um, but what we found is during the build of the exchange that we needed more parking in that area. So we re-implemented it back into the parking, and it's the offset, uh, parking for the region building that's on the corner of, uh, of Main and, uh, Pier. So
So that's the one on Lundie's Lane, right at corner of, uh, Lundie's Lane and Main?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, so that's kind of a distance for those people.
Yeah, so the, the primary area is the parking off Pier Street for, for the regional permits holders in it. But if they have an excess of people that are coming in, then their secondary parking is there. So the, their permits, uh, transfer between the two properties.
Uh, one final question, uh, through you. That parking pass that was initiated last year, how does that impact that we give, um, people then opportunity to buy? And I know it's being promoted again for a Christmas gift, um, so you can have the citywide parking. Have we seen any impact from that?
Overall, I'm going to say no, we haven't. Uh, the numbers have increased on the purchase of it, but we also have been actively tracking the use of the permits, and we don't find it had any significant, uh, overall impact on our general revenues.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, are there any other questions of staff? If not, there are some recommendations that are being put forth for the parking budget. Councilor Carrio? Move the recommendations by Councilor Carrio, seconded by Councilor Newisteg. If there aren't any other questions, I'll call that vote. Sorry, Councilor LaCoco?
Partial question, partial comment.
Sure.
Um, in the report, it talks about that the user fees in the tourist lots are, um, not as strong as they used to be. So, um, we're getting less revenue, less tourists from the U.S. and higher, uh, utilization of goal. I do understand that. What has happened since then, I've been contacted by two residents that rent parking spaces on Queen Street here and behind Queen Street towards Park. And, um, the one, she said that it's gone up thirty eight percent for two thousand and twenty six, um, a difference of forty two dollars to sixty seven dollars, a thirty eight percent increase. I did connect with, um, Mr. Brown, and we were talking about some of the, um, the reasons. Um, one of the things that I'm a little bit disturbed by is, um, uh, Mr. Brown said it was because of the development of the university and larger building developments in the downtown. It's a supply and demand. I'm sort of looking at this as if we're not getting as much revenue from our tourist parking, and now we're making it up with the residents. We have residents that are using these parking lots to go to work, and now they have to, um, pay more for their, um, for their parking permits. Uh, Mr. Brown also said that we were looking at increasing it back in two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty three, but because of COVID and hybrid work, we didn't do that. We wanted to let the businesses catch up. So I do get that. The second email that I got, she said that she just renewed her February, until February first, two thousand and twenty five, and it was a hundred and fifty two dollars. There are no spots left in Lot Two or Overflow Lot. She had to park down the street in the mud. She's asking, how can we sell spots to regulars and then have no space for them because of the students? We need assigned parking spots. So these are some of the issues that our residents are experiencing in the lots here right downtown. They work here. They've been purchasing for thirty years, these permits. We're having some challenges. We're not getting the revenue from our tourists, but now we're putting that burden onto our, our residents. So I'm really concerned about that. Can anybody give me some more guidance or some, some direction about what is happening and how we can make it that it's not on our residents, if the tourists? And I want to go back to that comment about the goal. If people are coming here, obviously, they're not parking. So we're not making that revenue for parking. I, I think that that's a challenge.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Burgess?
So, uh, thank you, councillor. A lot of questions there. So I'll start first with the, uh, increase, and I'll have both Ms. Clark and, um, Mr. Brown, uh, provide comments. So on the increase, uh, you hit it on the, uh, head, there was a long period of time with no increases. Even when you look at a per day rate, where like two dollars and some odd cents per day, there's no place you can normally park for that. Uh, and the reality is a parking space does cost money. Uh, and at that rate, you know, it's like a twenty-year payback, which is still a subsidy in many, uh, aspects. So, um, so, you know, it was a big shock at once, but it was seventy five cents a day, if I remember correctly?
It's gone from about two dollars a day now to two seventy five a day.
Um, so that was the first question. Second question, utilization of the downtown lot. You have to remember, I think there's a lot of focus on students, uh, but, um, I don't know if it's necessarily the students. A lot of the students are not necessarily parking. We also have a significant employer now. The University of Niagara Falls has significant, uh, employment. Uh, and then, uh, in their cases, they're not all, uh, the professors come in so many times per week. So they're the, you know, they, they do buy it, and they also park in other lots, which puts more pressure on. Um, so I would just not want to make sure that there's that stigma against the student, that that's not, there's also an employer. Um, and I think there's some other, uh, you know, activities here with construction and other things that are also taking up, uh, spots too, if you, with the go, um, go station reconstruction and, and that kind of stuff. So I'll, I'll start with that. I don't know if, uh, and then I think Mr. Brown can probably provide better detail on, you know, the utilization that we're seeing in the downtown. I would also remind council that, um, Eric and his team are looking at, um, downtown parking study and looking at, and council knows we're looking at options for, um, a new surface lot or, um, or structured lot for, uh, the downtown area, which would change the dynamic of parking in the downtown also. But I'll let Mr. Brown provide comment on the demands.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair. Uh, the, the idea is that parking is a user-paid philosophy. So when we make, we make reference to, uh, the tourist area and generating the revenue, and we, and then the resident, uh, in, in both cases, the resident and the tourist are the same thing. It's the user, um, that pays for the service. So whether a tourist wants to do a monthly parking permit or whether it's a, a resident that's going to work. But we did know that the overall rate for parking monthly was lowest in Niagara Falls than in the other area in the Niagara region. Uh, Thorold was the closest at forty five. So, uh, and it goes up to
building wait lists for people. And it, and then it's based on the priorities of where they want to be. So some people are further away, and as lots or things open up closer to where they want to work, they want to switch over and move to different lots. So we are trying to balance that supply and demand. Uh, I did read those, uh, emails from the individual, and we are doing what we can to assess that. For example, we would look at a lot that is, uh, in that case was both has parking for monthly permit holders and transient, and it might be the case that we're looking, oh, okay, let's designate the permit area so we can, you know, justify the use of those permits, and then this section becomes more transient and, and do the balance. So once those, that information comes out, we look at that, and, and then we start assessing it. So we start tracking the number of permits that are in a lot per day. Are, are they using it as an everyday capacity or every two, three-day capacity? So we are reviewing that as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Um, th- those are some answers that are going to solve some of the issues, but I am concerned, um, we're looking at a budget right now with not an explanation of the increase in the parking fees. I know the fee structure is coming in, in January, but had I not got these emails, I wouldn't have known the increase in the revenue, um, not just an increase in the revenue because we're getting more people, but the increase in the parking permits. Um, I like the idea of the designated parking areas because that's what the, that one woman said. Uh, she feels that she's purchasing in Lot Two. She should be able to go in Lot Two, and then when it's full, she's pushed off to another lot that is not paved. It's muddy. So there, there are some challenges. Um, I am concerned because we didn't increase it from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty three, now there's this huge increase. I know, I know it's only a few dollars here and a few dollars there, but it was enough for at least two people to contact me to say that these are some of the challenges. And when they hear that it's because of tourism, not getting enough revenue, it's because of the university and larger, uh, larger developments down here, it doesn't make our residents feel very good. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments then before I call the vote? So there's a motion on the floor made by Councilor Carrio, seconded by Councilor Newisteg, that we adopt the two recommended approaches that, uh, that staff have made. If there aren't any other comments, I'll call that vote. All those in favor, opposed, and there's one opposed. Um, so since there were no amendments, the parking budget is now deemed to be adopted. And, Mr. Mayor, that means that you won't have to use your strong mayor powers, and, and there's no ten-day veto period. Okay. So we'll go on to the second item then. CS two thousand and twenty five fifty nine, this deals with the capital budget, uh, that's in front of us. And, uh, the order that we're going to proceed is we're going to have a presentation by staff first, I believe, Mr. Dowling, and then after that, uh, council can ask any questions that they want. We're going to have delegations after that, and then we're going to, and then we're going to get into council amendments. So, um, Ms. Dowling, I'll pass the, uh, I'll pass the floor over to you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm just going to share my screen here. Perfect. Okay. Good afternoon, Budget Chair, Mayor Jim, members of council, staff and residents. Um, it's my pleasure to be presenting the two thousand and twenty six mayor's proposed capital budget this evening. Um, first, I just want to start with a few thank yous, if you don't mind. So, um, of course, this, um, you know, this is quite a large undertaking to put together the budget. So, um, finance staff, of course, met with departments to review and vet some of the submissions. Um, Terry Gudgeon, who's here this evening, and her team, um, in asset management were instrumental in helping us both with, um, you know, having those discussions with departments, the support of the capital forecast that was attached to the report, um, as well as our pilot this year for a project prioritization process, which I'll elaborate a little bit more in the presentation. Um, Jacob Thomas helped us with, um, business case development, which was really helpful for some of the departments. Um, and of course, staff across the city all had a big hand in preparing and, and the discussions around these projects. So while I get to present the budget, and, you know, it's really fun to do, um, it's certainly a compilation of work from users across the city. So really quickly, um, we've got a brief agenda this evening. I'll, I'll do a sort of a brief introduction and overview. Um, you know, we'll take a look at the budget at a glance. We'll highlight a few of the, um, key items in the budget, and then we'll do a little bit of a look back on this term of council. Okay, so the themes in the capital budget this year. So we sort of identified three major themes that came out of the submissions and the priorities in this year's capital budget. The first being, uh, growth ready. So there are several investments in housing-related infrastructure. Um, we're, we're doing employment growth studies for the employment areas. Um, we're looking at tourism initiatives and preparing for the provincial plan for destination Niagara. There's certainly a focus on efficiency. So we're looking at leveraging technology to streamline processes and optimize our resources for maximum impact. And then, of course, um, as has been the case for, for the last several capital budgets, we certainly have a focus on state of good repair. So that's looking at asset management and ensuring that we're prioritizing investments in the city's assets to meet the serviceable expectations of our residents. Really quickly, just looking at the current economic landscape, um, we do like to look and, and keep our eye on interest rates. So over the course of the year, the Bank of Canada target overnight interest rate has decreased one percent. That does help us, um, in terms of, you know, it can help reduce future costs of borrowing if we needed to debenture. Um, this current budget isn't proposing any debt at this time, but if there were any future debenture, debenture issuances, um, being in a lower rate environment certainly helps us, um, reduce our costs of borrowing. Inflation currently is at two point four percent based on current CPI indexes. Um, you know, again, that's sort of settled down from where it was at the peak of COVID, but, you know, nonetheless, it still puts a pressure on us when a lot of our costs are increasing annually to meet that inflation. Um, the same goes for construction costs. So the non-residential construction cost has risen about three point nine percent or so over the last year. And, you know, that continues to have a large impact on the capital budget, given its construction focus. And finally, just highlighting, um, tariff impact. So there still is some pricing uncertainty, um, especially for goods due to tariffs, and, you know, that continues to fluctuate and change rather frequently. So we're trying our best to, to keep an eye and, and assess that impact as we go. As I alluded to earlier, this year, we launched a project prioritization pilot project. Um, and, you know, in reality, this was our way of working through, um, the numerous project submissions that come in and use a standardized set of criteria to evaluate those projects evenly from a cross-departmental perspective. So, you know, there were fourteen ranking questions that, um, were evaluated for every project. There was a weighted scale related to each of those questions. Um, as I mentioned, we applied this cross-departmentally, and then it was reviewed subsequently by the asset management leadership team and the corporate leadership team, really just to ensure that, you know, some people's opinions may differ, or, you know, you might evaluate something a little bit higher, a little bit lower, just based on your own interpretation. So that was our So that was our way of calibrating it to ensure that we used a rather consistent approach in the application of the ratings. And of course, this was subsequently reviewed by the mayor. So it was new. We got some really great feedback. We'll look to continue to refine this over time. As you were, we kick off our budget process typically in the summer. So we'll look to incorporate some of that feedback into the budget process and continue to improve it moving forward. So just looking at the capital budget at a glance. The two key takeaways when you look at sort of how we've grouped the projects in this budget is that forty percent of the dollars or the spend in this budget supports state of good repair. And thirty-nine percent supports growth and strategic investments, which again, a lot of those housing-enabled investments that we're leveraging this year has contributed to that. You know, another key area of focus is the fact that, you know, seventeen percent of the budget is focused on, on infrastructure improvements. So I'll elaborate on that slightly and just highlight a few of the larger investments that are included in the project, in this capital budget. So when you look at the growth-related projects, you know, most notably, we have the twelve point eight million dollar project for the South Tourist Core Water Main Replacement and Sewer Expansion. That's largely to do with a housing-enabling water system fund grant that the city was awarded this year. So it's a great news story for us. We were able to accelerate some of our, some of our plans that would have taken us a lot longer to have gotten off the ground if it weren't for this grant. But that's a great news story for us and it's really helping us advance things. Under the infrastructure improvements, you'll note nearly eight million dollars that is being focused towards sewer separation. So of course, we view that as an improvement simply because we're not going to put a new combined sewer in the ground. It gives us an opportunity to not only separate the storm and sewer portions, but if needed, we'll also replace, you know, water infrastructure that's at end of life at the same time. So certainly a win for the residents and it's a way for us to, to start really moving forward and, and addressing a couple of areas of the city that remain on the, on the combined system and are prone to basement backups, et cetera. And then strategic investments. So finally, when we look at strategic investments, again, we're looking at investments in technology. So those include projects such as the Work and Asset Management System Replacement, which is supporting both our operations for work order management as well as our asset management tracking, as well as some artificial intelligence initiatives that support building and zoning checks and help make us a little bit more efficient. Really quickly, looking at budget funding. So we, this is a similar slide that we include every year, but we've segmented it a little bit more, really just to highlight the fact that, you know, of the seventy-eight million dollars, you know, within this capital budget overall, nearly fifty percent of it is coming from third-party controlled funding. Not a bad thing. You know, that's great news from a grant perspective. You know, it does represent why this year's budget is arguably a little bit larger than what we might have seen in some prior years. But, you know, it's something that frankly can be celebrated because we've had such great success with some of our, some of our grants. And I'll elaborate on the specific grant shortly. You know, the other big callouts for this year is the fact that there's no debt proposed in the twenty twenty-six capital budget. You know, that's really to save capacity for, you know, larger forecasted opportunities down the road for the city. And, you know, in saying that, that also means that there's no tax levy impact based on the current funding allocation. So none of this funding will have any kind of impact on the operating levy that comes forward in twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Dowling, can you just elaborate on that for a second? Because I think a lot of residents believe that when we pass a capital budget, it's going to affect their taxes somehow. And I know that you have at the bottom of the slide, slide there that there is no tax, tax levy impact.
Yes, of course. So through the chair, to be really clear on this, this is directly related to the funding sources. So none of the funding, you know, all of the funding essentially that is built into this budget is already part of our base operating budget that's coming forward. So in a scenario where we would not recommend this, but in a scenario where it was a zero percent budget next year, this funding is still included in that. Of course, we'll look to, you know, bring forward some suggested improvements. You know, we've had numerous reports this year, both from an asset management and a roads perspective, that have highlighted the need to look at increasing the capital levy in the future to help continue that ongoing capital investment. But especially because there's no debt in this budget, debt would normally automatically create an operating impact. And in this instance, because we're not, we're not proposing any, there, there is no impact. For full transparency, there may be a few projects here and there, and you would see them on the detail sheets. That would indicate if there could be a future operating impact for like software licensing or some other minor expenses, but nothing tied to the actual funding that's built in this. So no, you know, essentially this funding has, is already built in. And there's, there, we're not proposing any changes to the operating budget with this funding strategy.
And therefore people's taxes or the amount of tax that they pay is not affected by this capital budget.
That's absolutely correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So just looking at some highlights of the budget. So grants and external funding. So as I had alluded to earlier, this is a large driver of our budget being a little bit larger this year. Just to highlight a few specifically, we were awarded an eleven point seven million dollar grant for the Housing Enabled Water Systems Fund. Currently, nine point three million of that is allocated through the capital budget process. The remaining portion of it related to existing projects. So we were able to just swap that funding out, but we wanted to call that out. As well, we were the recipients of a ten million dollar award for the Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund. Currently, only two million of that is allocated in the budget. The rest, of course, will be allocated as we get into future phases. This is just for the phase one piece. And there's also one point eight million dollars of charge on funding related to the electric vehicle charger initiatives, as well as some other small grants. So there's a small grant from Entercan as well as some grants for the, what am I forgetting here? The, the Entercan grant is honestly the biggest piece. It's about four hundred thousand of the seven hundred thousand. And then there's a community, community emergency preparedness grant built into there as well. With respect to the allocation-based grants, these are grants where typically we receive an annual allocation. So at the top, we've got the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. We receive an annual allocation. The annual allocation's a little bit less than that. We've been able to allocate a little bit more just because of some prior year surpluses that have been uncommitted. But we wanted to differentiate between the two because some of the allocation-based grants, the, the amount we receive is essentially decided for us by that, by that granting group. Whereas on the application-based grants, it's often based off of an application that staff has submitted asking for a particular amount. And they're evaluated and granted based off of an awarding process. Going down the list, we have three point nine million dollars in the Canada Community Building Fund. That's the former federal gas tax program, just rebranded. And we get that allocation every year. And then we were also recipients of Building Faster Fund money again. Two point eight million dollars relating to the year two allocation is in this budget. We previously received about one point seven million in, in the year one allocation. That's already been addressed in the budget. And then just of note, there's some additional external contributions. So some of these projects have a cost-sharing component with, you know, the Parks Commission or the region, et cetera. And this is just acknowledging that, you know, our capital budget will always represent the gross cost. But sometimes there are some components that we're cost-sharing with other agencies, and this is just reflective of that. Everyone's favorite part, Operation Smooth Roads. So we're really excited this year. Our roads program is at seven and a half million dollars. Frankly, this is our most aggressive roads budget to date. And frankly, we're spending more on roads this year than we ever have. So, you know, as you'll see, the program includes our typical road program investments of the Mill and Pave Program, Road Rehabilitation Program, the Rural and Urban Surface Treatment Programs, and then our Roadway Design and Soil Investigation Program, which just helps us prepare for future years and get that scoping correct. You know, it really is important to note, you know, Mr. Nichol had his presentation on the Five-Year Roads Plan in October. And he highlighted the need for, you know, our annual spend to be more in the neighborhood of about ten point six million dollars over a ten-year span. So, you know, we're doing a really great job. We still, you know, have some additional room to kind of get to that target. But, you know, we're certainly getting there. One thing of note is just to highlight the funding. So as I alluded to earlier, you know, we do have this split of city-controlled versus third-party-controlled funding. Right now, we're using almost the entirety of the capital levy as, you know, our contribution to the roads program as our city-controlled piece. And we're relying quite heavily on some, you know, grant funding, whether it's CCBF funding or OSIF funding to cover off sort of the rest of the program. And that's not a bad thing. But, you know, it, it does, it is indicative of the fact that over time, you know, it, it is going to be a wise decision for us to continue to increase that annual investment so that we can get closer to our targets. You know, if we are successful in getting a capital levy increase in twenty twenty-six, it will certainly be devoted to this program to continue the progress that we've already made. Mr. Nichols also indicated that he'll be bringing an update probably late next year, which will include some additional budget refinements to the presentation he presented in October. So I just wanted to really quickly highlight some innovation and efficiency initiatives in the budget this year. So first and foremost is the artificial intelligence for building and zoning plans. You know, this is really an opportunity for us to save staff time, reduce approval timelines. You know, the current process, for those who may not be aware, there, there ends up being a little bit of back and forth as staff are reviewing changes. Sometimes the submission quality might not necessarily meet all of the expectations. And so that back and forth process can take a little bit of time. This is meant to be, you know, leveraging technology to help ensure that we're getting those quality submissions upfront and leveraging some of that technology to allow staff to, to focus more on a completed, more robust submission that we're able to then get through the process a little bit more efficiently. We have a, some cool equipment, the semi-autonomous line painting machine. And essentially, it's a really cool specialized piece of equipment that'll automate line painting at some of our sports fields. So once again, helps us increase some efficiency on our end and optimize our staff time. So we can have them do some other tasks and, and help us stay on top of all of the different operations at our sports fields. And then finally, the At Your Service Niagara Falls Phase Two. So this is twofold. It's both expanding service request options and integrating systems. But it also includes an AI chatbot, which will help give citizens faster and easier access to city services. So what's new this year is we wanted to do a little bit of a look back at this term of council and the investments made by this council. So first and foremost, I'm going to sound like a broken record when it comes to the capital levy, but it's very important from a sustainable funding perspective. So the last term of council approved a one percent capital levy. And up until now, this council has increased that by an additional one and a half percent. So the current capital levy sits at roughly two and a half percent. And, you know, again, it's really that, that increase has been instrumental in enabling us to invest more in roads and related infrastructure. You know, I'll be, I'll be honest, this council really has ensured that there's that balance between affordability and responsibility. We're not speaking to a twenty twenty-six enhancement at this time. That'll come forward through the operating budget process. But we did, we did want to note that, you know, this, this certainly isn't necessarily the end. This term of council may look to increase this beyond. And now we'll look at gross investment. So if we look at all of the capital budgets from twenty twenty-three through till twenty twenty-six, so including what's in front of you today, the gross capital investment overall, if you will, is two hundred and eighty-six million dollars, which is huge. Where you're talking close to three hundred million dollars of investment in the city and its assets. If we break that down a little bit more, just to help distill it, you'll see that once again, the trend of asset management prevails. So, you know, nearly sixty percent of all of that spend was focused on asset management, about a hundred and sixty-five million dollars worth. Of course, we still tried to balance growth needs with that to make sure that, you know, we could service the future projected population of our growing city. We did invest, you know, a solid amount of money in investing in pilots and new technology. And that's, that's all of those efficiency initiatives, new softwares, modernizing our systems, et cetera. We continue to invest in infrastructure improvements. So those are examples like those sewer separations, et cetera, where we're improving our infrastructure beyond just a straight like-for-like replacement. And we undertook some other service improvements, you know, that were a little bit smaller in nature, but still nonetheless provide, you know, improve the service that we're delivering to our, to our residents. So rather brief, but all in all, that's, that's the presentation. As councils are aware, you know, on November fourth, we released our capital budget book, which was a large three hundred and thirty-page document that I was certainly not going to read to you today. This is a bit of a distilled version, if you will. But yeah, if there's certainly any questions about this presentation, we can certainly address them now.
Okay. So questions of Mr. Dowling, and I have Counselor La Coco first, and then Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question. On page eight of your slides, where you give the breakdown of what the spending is, forty percent for state of good repair, twenty-five percent growth-related, seventeen percent infrastructure improvements, fourteen percent strategic improvements, and four percent other service improvements. And then off to the side, you have thirty-nine percent supports growth and strategic investment, and then forty percent supports the state of good repair. Is there a municipal standard in the municipality sector of where we should? I know it's a balancing act of saving, spending, put to infrastructure, put to new, new initiatives and improvements. Is there a standard?
Through the chair, I think it's, it's really circumstantial, to be honest. I think it depends on the current state of the municipality. As an example, you know, we're a bit of an older city, so we have aging infrastructure. Comparatively, some newer cities might not have, you know, infrastructure at, you know, at the same criticality as us. So I could see the structure of their investment plan be a little bit different. I think what's most important and what the province has signaled to us is they certainly want municipalities to take a very responsible approach at managing their assets. And I think this is representative of the fact that, you know, our city has certainly made it a priority. And we've demonstrated that over this term of council, that we're, we're taking the investment in our assets and our current state of repair seriously. And that becomes the measuring stick. I can see down the road, when, when we're benchmarking, I can see us getting to the point where they're starting to compare, you know, the condition of, of assets between municipalities, because the province is certainly looking at that. And I think as, if we're responsibly taking care of them, that would, that would set us apart, if you will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Patel.
Through you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dowling. Thank you so much for the great presentation. And before I start, I want to thank all the staff who helped us throughout the last couple of weeks. I know we've asked so many questions and you guys took time. You wanted a weekend to answer the questions. So thank you, everybody. And Ms. Dowling, I have one question about the grants. Are some of these grants reoccurring annually or it's, it changes every year?
Very good question. So through the chair, I'm just going to pull up that slide just so we have a visual, because it's got a good, it's got a lot of our main ones. So what I will say, when it comes to the OSIF funding and the CCBF funding, we have an annual allotment that we receive. This is, we're allocating a little bit more than what our annual allotment is, simply because we had some prior year surpluses that we freed up that we were able to mobilize. It's pretty, it's relatively steady. The CCBF funding specifically, it's a five-year funding agreement. So we have a decent runway to understand sort of what, what's coming. It's a pretty flat amount, but at least we have that certainty. The, the, I guess the flip side of that is on the application grade-based grant side, it's really hard to forecast those. It's going to be completely at the whim of frankly, some of the budgets of upper-tier governments and the programs that they roll out. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky one. A, they could renounce a program. We might not necessarily be successful with an application. So it's not really funding, unfortunately, that we're able to really easily forecast on because we don't really anticipate. It's hard to anticipate sometimes what those funding sources are. But as I said, we're very excited that we've had so much success this year. And I think it's, you know, it's a great news story for the city. But it, that those in particular, those application-based ones are going to vary quite, in some cases, quite drastically year to year, depending on the success of applications and the programs available.
Thank you. And are there questions just for Mr. Dowling, or I can ask questions for the staff here?
Of other staff as well, sure.
Thank you, Ms. Dowling. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Nichol. We have lots of roads. We are, we're doing lots of roads this year. It's great, actually. I'm happy. We all hear that's the one, number one concern we hear from residents. They are all happy. My concern is our construction season is so short because of the climate. Will we be able to handle all these roads within that six or seven month period? Because nothing's more frustrating than having road closures everywhere you go. So I want to, I want to hear from you. Are we going to be able to handle it? Thank you.
Thank you. And through the chair, short answer, yes. Seven and a half million is, I guess, I mean, a drop in the bucket of what we could be spending on, on our roads. We have six hundred kilometers of roads and this might be fifteen kilometers. So if you do the math, it's, you know, I don't think you do the math. It's not nearly, you know, all of the roads that are going to be in one area. What we try to do, however, is to try to bundle roads in areas that make sense to get better economies of scale. We'll see this year, we have the solar subdivision as our candidate. That means we'll be in there, we'll be doing the work, we'll be impacting multiple streets together, but with the hopes that we can move away from that area, that neighborhood, so that residents have one season of impact instead of five or six consecutive. so that residents have one season of impact instead of five or six consecutive seasons of impact. What we won't do is schedule two roads that are conflict to each other, or schedule a detour that takes us down a road that's also under construction. For example, we know Catell Drive in Chippewa is one that's on our radar. We hope to put that on after Willoughby Drive is done, not at the same time that Willoughby Drive's being under construction. So, Counselor, we do spend some time planning and, and making sure that we have ourselves coordinated with both our internal processes and the regions.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Dowling, is the project priority, prioritization that was with Mayor's input, right? Is it a pilot project, or are you planning to do it next year then?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. I would say it was a success this year. It was a pilot, so we, we have some great takeaways of how we can make some improvements next year. But I certainly think some form of prioritization is going to form part of the process that staff undertakes going forward. You know, I, I, I thought it was a success. And as I mentioned, you know, Ms. Gudgeon has another report on the agenda, I believe, that sort of details it in a lot more detail in terms of the process we went through. But certainly, I, I can, I can commit that we'll be looking at undertaking a similar process going forward, because it went quite well this year.
Through you, Chair, to that point, is it possible to get councils' input on that process too? Because what happens is we all hear questions throughout the year. It's just to tell you that what we hear from residents, and just before you start looking into this project, just everybody sends you an email telling you, this is what I am hearing. So you have a different scope, so you're looking through the different lens, because we all hear it from the people. So this community gets the info data too?
Absolutely. I think we can look at ways to incorporate some of that feedback. You know, by incorporating the mayor in the process this year, we were able to get some of his, some of his feedback on, on some of the projects. But we can certainly look at ways, as we've said, we're trying really hard to, at least from a staff level, try to use, you know, some best practices and some metrics to evaluate projects in a fair manner. Items that could be of specific community importance, I think, you know, is something that, that council helps us drive through this process and through this deliberation. So I think we'll take that back and see if there's an opportunity to potentially incorporate that. But I wouldn't want to remove the opportunity to have that, that discussion around the horse here as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Newstake.
Thank you, Chair. And also, just echoing what Counselor Patel said, thank you for all that hard work, to you, your team, and everybody we know. It just didn't come together. One, a few questions I have, and actually, I want to go back to the grant. So we're receiving $22 million in federal provincial use highlight that's basically making up, I know mine had the 22, but a significant portion of the capital budget. What vulnerabilities are, do we have with these grants? Are they etched in stone that there is no chance of losing any of these grants? Or if there is any possibility? And secondly, what, if so, what contingencies are in place to substitute that?
I, I think you said the right side is, is pretty stable, and the left side is ones that you've made applications in specific for.
That's correct, yes. So through the chair, to answer the question, specifically on the, the grants that we've highlighted on the left-hand side, so the HUSIF funding, CSRF funding, we've executed transfer payment agreements with, with the province for all three of those organs, including Charge On. So from a stability perspective, the funds have been committed and allocated to the city. The risks tend to be related to timelines. So, you know, some of these grants can, can carry some more aggressive timelines, and staff is working quickly, and this is why it's coming forward now, so we can get all of the approvals required. We can get procurement started, and we can do the best we can to, to meet those timeline requirements in the grants. You know, from a contingency perspective, you know, we've been lucky in past history that we haven't had to worry too, too much about the situations. A lot of these grants, you know, will often look for projects that are a little bit further along. Like, for example, the Housing Enabled Water Systems Fund, we'd already gotten some preliminary budgets to start portions of that work. We were just lucky to be awarded such a large grant that we were able to do multiple phases all at once. So in saying that, I think really, that's probably the biggest risk, would just be ensuring that, you know, we get the budgets in place, we get our procurements out on time, to make sure that we can get the work done and, and meet those timeline commitments.
Second question. So I know that we have $6.9 million in the capital budget being contributed from development charges. With the slowing housing market and building, how do you see that playing out? Or is this a secure now, and will it have impacts in the future?
That's a great question, Counselor. So through the chair, you know, it is something we're constantly monitoring in terms of the cash flow of our development charges. What I will say is the pace of our, especially on the hard infrastructure side, so things like water mains, sewers, roads, et cetera, most of that is so directly tied to the development that the timing of when that comes forward and when we do the work is largely tied to applications and work proceedings. So in an ideal world, the timing of that work is such that the development should happen shortly after. The city's in a unique position where, because sometimes we need to help build some of that enabling infrastructure to allow the development to go through, we're often in a position where sometimes we're front-ending a little bit, if you will, where we're putting in the infrastructure, and the development is now able to proceed, and we're able to collect the development charges accordingly. So it's something that staff is monitoring. The tool in our arsenal for this would be if, if we're concerned about the pace of collections in the future, staff may recommend potentially more debt usage strategically for some, for, for certain development-funded assets, which will allow us to smooth out the, the payments related to that a little bit more in line with, with collections. But, you know, those are sort of the, the tools in our arsenal right now. For the time being, a lot of what's being proposed right now is more infrastructure-oriented, to really get servicing to areas where we can really generate some, some future housing opportunities and subsequently collect the development charges related to that.
A third question through you, Chair. I also see a large transfer from special reserves. Is there a, do we have a policy in terms of what level, minimum level we have for our reserves? Or is it just on a, a need basis?
That's a great question.
Through my question.
So through the chair, I will say, when it comes to the capital reserves, we're certainly trying to keep our eye on, on future commitments when we're, when we're committing those funds out. Right now, the majority of those reserves are funded from prior year project surpluses. This year, as a way to strategically not take on additional debt, we did draw down our reserves a little bit, a little bit more. You know, it, it's, I'll say, a little bit of a good news story, and frankly, was, you know, are, an approach that we adopted from our budget chair in terms of, you know, trying to save that debt capacity for some of our larger future investments down the road, and focus on reserves. And we didn't want, you know, we wanted, you know, the residents to appreciate that, you know, we're not stockpiling money away necessarily. I will say that we're going to need to still have the conversation about continuing that annual increase in the capital levy to keep that investment going, because there aren't as many inflows going into these reserves. We did a really large housekeeping cleanup, if you will, of some older projects that we were able to close out and free up some of those funds, to frankly, be able to propose as large of a program as we were able to. So, you know, great win, but you're absolutely right. In the future, we'll start working a little bit more towards that with, with our new ERP system. We're going to have some better tools at our disposal to help keep track of that and forecast a little bit better for ourselves. And we'll take that seriously to make sure that we've got a good, sustainable plan moving forward.
Does the province mandate how much amenities quality needs to have in reserves? Like, there with our capital assets, they want it to look a certain ways, or something similar with reserves?
Through the chair, I wouldn't say directly on reserves. Obviously, we don't want to be in a negative position. So we're obviously always keeping an eye on that. Where it can kind of come into play is when you're starting to look at ratios. So if you look at financial ratios of, you know, debt to equity, if you will, that can be a metric that, you know, the province or others can use on our financial statements as a way to assess the financial health of the corporation. I will say right now, we're, we're in a good spot. But it is something that we can keep around. The province really doesn't necessarily mandate it. If anything, I think they were concerned about the opposite perception. So on the development charges side, for example, legislation came down a couple of years ago that requires us to, you know, basically commit or spend a large portion of our development charge reserves. Because I think there, there was a concern that people, the municipalities could essentially be collecting these development charges and not actually using them. So, you know, I, I think that's, that's, if anything, that's the bigger concern, is if we're seemingly not, not, not moving with some of our investment plans. But, you know, a balance in a reserve fund, to me, isn't necessarily indicative just as a balance, as a good or bad thing. It's something that we need to look at a little bit more holistically in terms of what's the plan. Because they become a really helpful tool for us to spread out these large investments. So, you know, if we have a large bridge coming due, and we've got, you know, a reasonable, healthy reserve, great. We can rely on that and smooth that out, and we're not coming to council saying, well, now we need to really drastically look at an infusion of cash into capital to cover this. So, you know, we just, we're going to have to continue to calibrate and monitor our reserves to make sure that we can keep things smoothed out and, and moving smoothly moving forward.
Thank you. And I have a question for Mr. Nicol. You have a substantial budget this year, which is fantastic, and we want to see that. Now, obviously, you're projecting those costs. How confident are you, or are there things like the tariffs, like in the last year, the tariffs and things like that? Do you build in a room of contingency or that, so we don't end up falling behind? Or how is, how do you come up with your budget?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. Through the chair, there's two things I think that are, are in our favor. One is approval of the capital budget early, helps us to get out in front of the projects, tendering timelines, so the contractors see our projects first. Maybe I'll add a third thing. The second thing is having a little bit further look ahead in our 10-year capital planning. So we're planning not just this year, but next year, and the year after, and the year after, so we can start to line things up more strategically. And I guess the, the third thing that, I'm sorry, my mind is drawing a blank on there, even on the question. But those are some of the areas that we, you know, we, we find ourselves being able to, to take advantage of.
Would tariffs be something that would come into play as well? The uncertainty of all of that?
Yeah, and, and thank you, actually, for reminding me of the question. We, we do carry a contingency when, within each of our projects. So we don't budget a separate contingency line item in your budgets that you see. But every project includes some level of contingency for a few reasons. For project escalation, so anytime we know that there's a project or a material increase, we have already included that in our estimates. But we also include some contingency for the unknown. When we're digging up old roads and pipes, we don't know what's there all the time. So we're not seeing any very large tariff-related impacts on our regular linear roadway type of construction. A lot of that is material that's sourced here in Canada, like aggregates and, you know, concrete and things of that nature. Pipe is a bit more in flux, but we haven't seen that be a significant trigger for us to significantly increase construction pricing. It's some of the spin-off. So with the contractors buying equipment that has to be brought in from the US, now it starts to trickle down into their increased prices. So we're seeing a little bit of evidence of increasing, but not as like a 25% jump at this point in time. Nonetheless, that contingency helps us to buffer some of those impacts.
One more final question for you. We saw the weighting of priorities. Now, you obviously are doing that within your department as well. When you come to, for example, streets or basement flooding, are you doing that? Is your department doing that just because, based on what they understand? Or do we take residents' feedback into account? Like, if we're getting a lot of complaints at a certain area, basements are flooding, does that come into the priority of where we're deciding to do the, those repairs?
Yeah, and through the chair, it's a great question. I, I would say that we don't want to only take resident complaints as our primary driver for feedback, because I know there's people who don't know who to call to, to complain. So what we do is we take a risk-based approach, where we analyze the relative risk between one item and another item. So all of those factors come together for us to evaluate sort of that overall risk of that project. The risk of not doing the project, the risk of delaying it, and, you know, the risk of, of, you know, doing the project on the community where we might have the infrastructure that's failing. So that's, so the resident feedback is quite important. We also will take that into account when we do our, our project public meetings. That's the point of those public meetings, to get that individual feedback, so we can help, you know, dial in and, and out some of the specifics of those projects. It's something we've done a, a great job of increasing our engagement through our, our Let's Talk platform.
Okay, thank you. And one last final question, this is for Shelley. Right now, we hear a lot about cyber risk, and having seen different municipalities get attacked, how much of our, and you have a substantial budget this year as well with the IT, how much is being dedicated, devoted to making sure that we are secure here and no data breaches are affecting and affecting our service level to the residents?
Thank you, through the chair, for that question. I don't have that data readily available, but I can certainly pull some information. We have some staffing costs, we have insurance costs, and we have a number of software items related to cyber protection for the city.
Can you speak to it in general, just assuring the resident that we are aware of it, that there is a lot of measures being, and we're seeing it in this budget?
Yes, certainly, through the chair to Counselor. Excellent question. We take cyber very seriously, cyber threats very seriously at the city. We have enabled a number of different software applications, learning and development, licensing, regular monitoring. The list goes on and on, and those impacts are in the budgets. So it's very serious, and we consider it holistically as we prioritize projects and implement projects as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Patel, and then Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, to maybe Mr. Dowling or Ms. Clark. You know, in our budget, it says a transfer from operating. And when we tell people the levy is built in, people assume that because we are transferring that amount from operating to capital, we are already increasing the levy in the capital budget. Would you please explain how that works?
Certainly, thank you. Through the chair, I think Mr. Dowling touched on this a little bit. So when we say there's no increase in the levy related to the capital funding, it's because these amounts are in your base budget. So Mr. Dowling put it quite correctly, saying, you know, if we rolled forward this budget into next year, made no changes, no increases, that 3.5 million exists in that budget. The only way that doesn't exist is if you were to take it out, which frankly, would make negative progress on closing the infrastructure deficit. So it certainly wouldn't be something that's recommended. But we make the assumption that we will not be decreasing what's in the base budget. And that's why we're able to say there's no levy increase related to it. Now, what we're, we're not saying is, we're definitely going to ask for an increase in January on operating, whether we get it or not, so be it, it's not factored into this budget. If we get it at that time, we will make a motion to amend this budget and include that additional funding.
Okay, Counselor LaCoco. More questions?
Two more questions, yeah. Through you, Chair, the question is for Mr. Nicol. In our, in our capital budget, there is a section where we talk about sewer lining. How is that program, how does that program, would you please?
Thank you.
Give some information?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Sewer lining is a trenchless application that replaces the pipe from the inside out, rather than digging up that pipe and putting a new one in its place, where the size of the pipe is sufficient to remain the same size over the next growth period that we plan for. The process involves slip lining, so sending in a felt type of insert, and then curing it inside the pipe. It's about one-third of the cost of open-cut digging that road, and we don't have the impacts to traffic and businesses and all of those things. So we've been doing that process for about five to, to six years so far. It's been very successful, and it will help us achieve our asset management targets sooner than it would if we were to dig them open-cut, because I mentioned, it's one-third of the cost.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. How long does it last, for example, when you line the sewer? How long does it last?
Yeah, thank you. Well, this is newer technology, I mean, 20 years of technology. But every evidence of the scientific investigations that have been done have suggested that it will last just as long as a brand-new pipe, so at least 75 years.
Thank you. And one last question through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Dowling. In this term, we are, in this term, we are investing 12% into digital or maybe modernizing our systems. Why are we so behind? Is there a reason we were behind from before, or we are just falling behind as we are going forward?
Through the chair, to the Counselor, excellent question. I, I think from what my lens is, and I'll give you a personal view, is I think we were at a stage at the city where we're growing, and we needed to make some investments in technologies and modernize. And so the last few years, we've spent considerable time working on that strategy as adopted in the city council strategic plan, modernizing. in the city council strategic plan, modernizing technology and leveraging that information and making efficiencies both for the customer and internally as we serve that customer. So, we've spent some considerable dollars getting us up to speed. And then, as we move forward, we'll be able to flatten that out. There won't be such critical core systems that require immediate updating, but that's been the general work that we've been undergoing over the last several years.
Thank you.
Good information. Okay, councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Dowling. You talked about debt, and I, I know there's a regulation that municipalities can't exceed over 25% annual repayment limit, the ARL. Most, most are 10% to 15%, and our policy is 15%. Where are we now through the chair? What is our ARL?
Thank you for the question, councillor. I would have to check specifically to get back to you, but the last metric I saw, I think we were around seven or eight percent. We're sub-10%. Our internal policy limit, as you indicated, is 15%. The legislative limit is 25%, and that's based off of, the measurement in the provinces, it's based off of own source revenues. So, it's looking at the, the overall revenue that the city generates.
Okay, thank you. And it talks in the report about not issuing any new debt because we're, we're saving it for future years, big projects. What, through the chair to Mr. Dowling, what big projects are you considering that to be?
Through the chair, I, you know, it'll, we'll, we'll be discussing it a little bit more later, I believe, but, you know, the one that's on the horizon right now potentially would be the Chippewa Arena project. You know, that's a bit of a multi-general investment, multi-generational investment, if you will. So, not only is debt a great opportunity to, to invest and spend that money and spread it out, it also creates a little bit of intergenerational equity because, you know, there's future generations that are gonna benefit from that type of, you know, large infrastructure investment. And so, those, those scale of investments are what we're looking for, large facilities as well as maybe specific large infrastructure. As we said, if there was, you know, really large core infrastructure that was gonna service a growth area, that might be another area we consider. And again, that can sometimes help us time things a little bit better with the pace of development. In the forecast that's attached, you'll see that, you know, there are other, you know, large investments that have been identified in the future. We're not committed to them by any means because they're just forecasted, but knowing that some of those are on the horizon, we, we just certainly want to be responsible with our current allocation of debt to ensure that we have sufficient capacity when we get closer to those big investments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I have councillor Strange and then Mayor Diodati, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Mr. Dowling, great presentation. Mine's more on the, the actual 2026 capital budget book. And it's more, yesterday, we had the, the groundbreaking of the Park Street development, and there's on page 47 of our budget book was the CEO's budget. He has $750,000 for a strategic investment for that project. I was just wondering for the thousands of people that are watching today, if we could break down what our partnership with ALLETE, with the 10-story, 362 units, how much we've invested, we're partnering with them, you know, going forward, you know, where, where do we expect the rentals to come from? Is there more? Because we know we have an influx of, of students from the University of Niagara Falls and growth in Niagara Falls. And are these all, all rentals? Are there, no one's buying these? And how many are affordable? How many regional housing of these, of these units?
Thank you through the chair to councillor and the thousands of people watching this. The, the strategy behind the investment is at one point in time, previous council was looking at donating the land for development. We changed that to using that land as, as a equity position into the development. So, the cost for us would, is $2 million of equity investment plus the cost of the land, which gives us 40% ownership into that property. We are using some of the Building Faster Fund money that the province provides, which is supposed to be for projects such as this, to cover some of our equity position in, in the property. Yeah, it's over 300 units. There's both RGI, which is rent geared to income, which is a program that the region runs where they want you to only spend 30% of your income, and then they top up the rest of that to make the affordable, to make the rent payment. So, they're committing to 36 units for that, and then there'll be another 36 units of attainable rent. But the vast majority of the rent product in there would be in today's dollars, between $1,200 and $1,500 of rent. There's a number of three-bedroom units, which when we did the demand analysis, I was a little surprised that there was a fair amount of demand for three-bedroom units. Those would be over $2,000 in rent because of the size of the apartment. What it really means for the city, there hasn't been a lot of new rental product built. A lot of our rental inventory is aging. And so, when you put out new product, it's, you know, creates 300 spaces. And our, last time I checked, our occup, or occupancy level is, or vacancy level, I should say, is, is around 2%, which means we need to add rental product. And it's purpose-built, it will not be condoized. The other advantage that I like by being a shareholder, yes, it, you know, there's always risks when you're an owner in a project, but it also gives you a level of control. So, we have control over a product. So, we're not completely reliant upon a developer that, that maybe will flip it into a condo market. We can have some control over maintaining that as a rental, as a rental product in the downtown. And, you know, once we have it up and built and stabilized, a future council may say, well, let's exit that investment and build another one and start another one off. And we have that ability to do it because we, we put the equity in. So, I think it's great for the city going forward, and it has been costed out, but like I said, some of that money is gonna come from our Building Faster Fund. The land was older land, but Mr. Nichol might correct me, but I know we were well over $1 million to clean that property up to get it to a record of site condition. So, so, you know, we will hopefully recoup that in the future when we exit that investment.
So, the cost of construction, are we?
Oh, it's, yeah.
Are we, like, do we have to participate in that?
Well, we, that's part of the $2 million plus the land. So, our, our, we'll be putting in $2 million as part of the cost of construction. The, the company itself that, and ALLETE puts in their money for capital, and then there'll be CMHC financing on that project. So, we'll borrow money and then the rents generated in that facility will pay off the, off the mortgage.
Do we, have a idea of return on investment on that per year?
Yeah, it's targeted at, with apartment buildings, the, it's a very long asset. So, unlike a condo where you get your money upfront, once you build it, you have to take a, a longer term. That's why there's not a lot of rental built because it's, it's tougher for the investors to get their money out of that stream. But the targeted, the target that we're, we put on it is between 6% and 8% rate of return on, on that investment over the longer term.
And when do we expect to get our full money that we invested back?
That, that will be up for a full council. Usually, it's five years of a stabilization period for an apartment building. So, by the time it's between three to five years to stabilize, though, I can attest that the most recent market, one that I know built in the city just across from the TD Bank there, I think that leased out fully within hours. So, normally, what you do is you lease it out fully, stabilize the cost, and then you can, then there are REITs and stuff that will pick that up. But that will be for a decision on a future council.
Yeah, and do we expect it to stay in it? You know, as far as, as long as we're making money, what do we do with that, with that, those funds then?
Yeah.
Those profitable funds?
That'll come back as a dividend to the, to the city, and we can, you know, decide how to, how to do that at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have Mayor Diodati.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Mr. Nichol, just regarding housing. So, I know that Mr. Dowling mentioned this is the most money we've ever spent on roads in the city, which I'm so proud of for this operation, Smooth Roads, and I know Eric's excited because, you know, we hear more than anything. If I had to pick the number-one issue people bring to us, it's the condition of some of our roads. And the other thing that I know through you, Chair, is that, you know, a really bad road started out as a deteriorating road that wasn't addressed, and we let it go, and then it got to the point where we just had to completely reconstruct it. But a lot of people don't exactly understand the order of operations for road. I'm just hoping that Mr. Nichol can just help us because I know councillor Patel mentioned about council's input. We don't, the last thing we want to do is make it political, what roads we do. It's not based on that at all. That's not the kind of input I give. It's based on the condition of the roads assessment that's done by the engineers, just to be clear. And, and secondly, if you could, through you, Chair, Mr. Nichol, explain, because I know in the past, long time ago, we'd pave a road and then we'd rip it up two years later and put new sewers. It seemed the two hands weren't talking and we're so much more efficient at this. I remember I grew up, the street I grew up on, they paved the road finally, and then they ripped it all up to put in new sewers a few years later. We're all like, my gosh, what are you guys doing? We just finally got a new road. And, and so, anyway, we don't do unless we have a water main go, but we don't plan it that way. So, maybe through you, Chair, we could just ask Mr. Nichol how he came up with the roads he was gonna do, what the process is, because I'm thrilled, more money spent now for roads than we've ever spent. And I think that's exactly the core focus that people are asking us to do. So, I just hope maybe I could get a little insight on that one through you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, did you say more money than ever spent?
I, I did. I said more money spent than ever before on roads. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I mean, I can echo, that's exactly where we want to be right now, Mr. Chair. And we, we follow what I call a screening process, and it all, it involves proper planning on our roads and our corridors. We're taking what we're calling a corridor approach to our infrastructure now and looking at it through longer-term lenses. What we're planning for are our growth areas and our asset management areas, and that's driving our 10-year capital plan. So, anywhere we know that we have infrastructure that's in poor shape, we're planning that out, mapping that out based on the funding scenarios that we feel are, are reasonable and appropriate, and also evaluating the impact of using development charges to pay for that infrastructure. So, once we've mapped out a 10-year forecast, we know that it's nonsensical to repave those roads that are part of a water or sewer plan or it's coming up in the near future. So, the most important thing I would say is we also need to fund our water programs and our sewer programs because we're waiting on those roads. The roads aren't being paved because we're waiting for that infrastructure to be done in a, in the proper sequence. The second thing we do is after we've screened out all that infrastructure, we have a look at what's left. What's left are the, the number of roads that can, can reasonably be resurfaced or repaired without having any out-of-sequence scenarios. And then, we start to look at this from an efficiency lens. So, what's the best timing, the best approach for that road to ensure that it's maintained over its life cycle? We don't want to be reactive, we want to be proactive on our roads. Some roads have well passed their life expectancy, but some roads are right at that point where we can save them and we can save money because letting them expire and go to a point where they need full reconstruction is about triple the cost, just like my sewer lining. If we wait too long, the costs escalate to a point where it's actually costing the taxpayer more because we're not investing in some of those initial treatments upfront. So, Mr. Mayor, to answer that question, you know, sort of in a roundabout way, you know, proper planning of our corridors, making sure we're funding our infrastructure, and then spending a bit of time and effort to develop our five-year road plan is going to help our residents to make sure that the investments are targeted in the right locations so that we're not spiraling out of control, so to speak, in terms of funding those road reconstructions, which are expensive, they're, make delays, and, and, you know, they're disruptive to, to businesses and residents as they try to go through their commute. We want to spend a little bit more money and time in our pavement preservation programs, our milling and paving so that those roads don't deteriorate to a point where they're beyond saving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have councillor Baldinelli, Carrio and Nuesteg, please.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Chair. Probably both Mr. CAO and Eric. The Valley Way project, can you let, expand on the sewer separation phase and how it affects the parking that we're gonna have at Bridge Street and when that is gonna be actually started and be useful for the community in downtown?
Yeah, through the, through the chair, the Valley Way project you're referring to is that downstream collection of a large drainage catchment through what we call the muddy-run sewer. So, all of that area up in Valley Way drains into one old ditch that is now concreted, and it's a, it's a fairly important sewer that, that drains a large part of the city. It runs right through the former transit garage and central pumping station that's immediately adjacent to the go station. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, councillor. So, it is encumbering the property where we propose to provide some parking for the known needs today, for the 4,500 Park Street development, for those who want to come and visit downtown and shop or do other things down here, and potentially for the university and their, and their growth needs and providing a place for their students and their faculty to park. So, it's important for us to reroute that sewer out of that parking area to prevent disruptions in the future. The ultimate plan is to decommission it, but that is a 50-year plan when we can set, once we've separated all the sewers upstream. So, we need to make sure that that, the pipe underground is sufficient to, so that it doesn't have any failures over the, the parking term horizon, so at least the next 25 years. And it needs to be moved, unencumber the parking. That will enable us to build the parking that we need to support the development in that area.
Thank you. So, how, in terms of the length of time, and when do you think will we, we be getting a parking lot, even a Phase 1 or Phase 2 or Phase 3 part of that parking lot so that we can start welcoming guests in parking locations?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, we're, you know, it's a hard question to answer because we're intertwined with Niagara region's plans to reconstruct Bridge Street and Erie Avenue and to reconstruct the parking related to the go station, all on the north side of the Bridge Street road. Bridge Street's a regional road. We, we have money in ISIP funding from 2018, 2019 that is partially able to fund the parking lot. What we don't want to do is go too far out of sequence and then build a wrong parking lot in the wrong location. That doesn't work well with the region's plans to reconstruct those roads. We also don't want to build something that's too small or too big for the planned development downtown. So, we want to hit that sweet spot, councillor, where it's the right location, the right size, the right, right, you know, the right price, too. I can say at this point in time, we have the, the concept plans, about 30% design. We, we anticipate that the region is at some point going to approve that capital budget for Bridge Street reconstruction, and then the preference is to work with them to have that be included in the project built to take advantage of economies of scale. If their project gets delayed and delayed and delayed, it may be more advantageous for the city to go ahead and build that parking lot so we can clear that, out that hurdle that, that project might need to get to construction. So, we're, the short answer, make a long answer short, is we're working with the region to try to find the best timing for that and also to try to make sure we're not missing the opportunity that we need to take to ensure there's parking for those demands that are going to be here. The 4,500 Park Street site is one to two years potentially, so we want to make sure it's done definitely before that timeline.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Baldinelli. I have councillor Carrio, Nuesteg and Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A very good presentation by everyone. Another byproduct that I don't think we ever talk about is when we do all the milling, the byproduct of the milling is a huge mountain of asphalt that I don't know whether we, I think we use some of it, but it, but it, it's accessible to other businesses in the city that maybe can't afford to put down new pavement, new asphalt, and they get a chance to buy the millings and improve their parking lots, improve their roadways that are maybe not engineered, but maybe something they can do to help them that they wouldn't be able to do if we weren't producing all of the millings.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Nuesteg and councillor Patel.
Thank you, Chair, and this is for Mr. Nichol. I just wanted to ask about these stormwater management ponds. We have the Fernwood and the Chippewa, they're costing over $1 million this year to renovate, I guess. I don't know how to clean them out because of phragmities. How many of these ponds do we have in the city? Question one. Second part of that is what state of repair are they in? And are we looking at future budgets in the future? Because these phragmities are very expensive creatures, or plants, I guess, whatever.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. I just want to be very clear that the phragmities is only one small component of the work we need to do, is removal of phragmities. We have, I don't know if this is scheduled, it was offhand, we have over 20 ponds, probably not more than 40, thinking the numbers around like 27 or 28 ponds in our system. They were evaluated, I'd say, four years ago by evaluation. The, the process for evaluation includes The, the process for evaluation includes sending people out with equipment to measure the depth of the sediment. What happens is over time of the runoff washes, uh, silt and debris from the roads that drain into that pond, and it starts to fill up the pond. That's a good thing because if it wasn't filling up the pond, it would be filling up the creeks and streams and it's, it's sending contaminants down into those downstream water courses. They also have a effect of buffering the, the peak flow that runs off of our land from flooding out downstream properties. When they fill up too full, they don't provide benefit to the environment in terms of capturing any of that sediment. They also don't provide benefit of, of, um, slowing that peak runoff. So, um, the assessment done about four years ago identified those that have reached their capacity, which means they're full of sediment and they're not performing like they need to perform. Um, we've just recently cleaned out Dominant Crescent Pond and the Caligero Estates. That went very successfully. And the, the next two ponds identified were in Fernwood, uh, and Chippewa West Phase 1. The, um, the impact of not doing those ponds is, it could be significant if there's debris and backup that, uh, could cause flooding on the road and upstream. We also now have this new phenomenon of the, uh, the phragmities, which is an invasive species that's sort of taken over some of those stormwater areas. It likes low-lying wetlands. This year, we were successful with a grant to spray and eradicate a lot of that material. Wouldn't eradicate all of it. Um, but an important part of remeeting those ponds is removing all that sediment, is making sure we're getting all the roots of that phragmities and making sure that we're disposing, uh, disposiving it, disposing it in a way that, um, doesn't spread the phragmities. And so that, that's all part of some of these projects.
Okay, so, um, okay, and the other ones are in fairly good shape. We're not expecting those next year in the capital budget?
Yeah, uh, through, through the chair, we're, um, I think after these two, there, there will be future ponds that will come up. We'll need to do another evaluation of the, the pond depths and where they're at. These are the, these two that are on the radar right now are the, are the most significant ponds that are at their limit. I can't tell you today where their, the other ones are. They are embedded in our 10-year forecast and our asset management plan, meaning that at some point in time, when it's the right time, they'll be presented as a project that needs to be, uh, committed for funding.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to address something Mr. Mayor said about the scoring system. I'm not, I'm not asking to rewrite the scoring system or make it political. All I asked was, uh, council putting the input before the system, then about what we hear from residents. It just gives the staff more data and more file, uh, and more information to work on just for edit extra lens of, uh, edit extra lens where they can see it through the resident's eye just to know that what we are hearing. It's not that I'm not asking to change the whole system, it's just the added data. That's what I was asking for.
Thanks. Uh, wow. Um, yeah, so just in terms of the capital prioritization, there is another report that's after this one. Political factor is part of that, and it's nice to see that staff didn't even give us a score for that one. So we're gonna go to Counsel LaCoco. He has the next question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify the process. Um, I have some questions on specific projects, and I thought we were going to cover them later, so I haven't asked those. Um, I thought we were going to, going to do the presentation first, then the delegation.
That's what it was supposed to be?
Okay, I will, I will not ask my questions specifically about the report or the budget book if we can do the delegation, and then I, I do have some specific questions about projects.
It was supposed to be just questions of Mr. Dowling, but it kind of morphed into questions of everyone, and I just didn't want to stop it because I figured we either ask the questions now or we're gonna ask them later.
So I, I won't. We'll do it after, after the delegation. Thank you.
All right. Oh, I, well, not with me, but, okay. So on that point then, are there any other questions of Mr. Dowling in his presentation? Okay, seeing none then. Thank you, Mr. Dowling. You did a great job.
He has Apple Watch for standing.
Yeah, so we're gonna move, so we're gonna move on to delegations now, and I'll ask Madam Clerk if she could let us know if there's any delegations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is one delegation, um, from Jody Burdette.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Burdette. I can hear you.
Okay. I've given everybody a handout.
Yes.
So that they can have some more information. My name is Jody Burdette. I live at 4480 Bridge Street. I'm here as a resident and taxpayer, not as an accountant, to share a layperson's understanding of how our capital budgets have been funded, what that means for reserves, and what pressures this creates for future years. I've submitted a detailed written brief. Tonight, I want to highlight the main themes and my requests. What I set out to understand was simple. How is our growing list of capital projects actually being paid for? And what is happening to the city's savings as a result? From the documents I reviewed, the city had about $50 million in reserves in 2024, roughly $35 million in capital reserves, and 15 in operating reserves. One thing that stood out is that capital reserves are more than double operating reserves. That may be intentional, but it deserves clearer explanation. Each year, the city contributes about 20 to 23 million from the tax levy and water wastewater rates into the capital system. That's the steady base fuel. On top of that, budgets rely on development charges, grants, OLG funds, reserves, and earlier in the term, debentures. Over the past two years, borrowing has been reduced, no new debt in 2025, and none planned for 2026. The 2026 program, about $78.5 million, the largest of the term, is made possible largely by drawing on reserves and OLG funds, roughly $15 million from capital reserves, $2 million from the dedicated levy reserve, and $10 million from OLG reserves plus development charges and grants. In plain terms, it's a very ambitious capital year financed heavily by savings and one-time sources rather than visible tax increases or borrowing. In the 2023 through 2025, contributions into reserves likely exceeded draws, so reserves grew. In 2026, the proposed draws are large enough that reserves could flatten or start declining. Using close to half of a known $35 million capital reserve baseline in a single year is a substantial choice. Whether that pattern is sustainable over the next five to 10 years is not clear from public documents. This also reflects the election cycle effect. Larger levy increases and reserve building in the early year, followed by a very large capital program in the final year financed by reserves and OLG. I'm not accusing anyone of bad faith. I'm pointing out that this approach moderates pressures on taxes and debt today by leaning on savings that future councils might wish to, wish were still available. For me, the biggest issue is transparency. To understand this, I had to file FOI request, rebuild reserve list manually. That's not something the average resident should have to do. People deserve a clear picture of how much is in our reserves, how much is going in and out each year, and what that means for the future. So what I'm, what I am asking council, so I'm asking council for four things. Reserve transparency. Include a clear reserve and reserve fund summary in budgets showing opening balances, annual contributions, draws, closing balances, and target levels over at least three rolling years. Election cycle clarity. When communicating the 2026 capital budget explicitly, acknowledge how much of the reduced tax impact and avoidance of new debt comes from reserves and OLG funds. Sustainability check. Provide a brief public analysis of whether the current pace of reserve contributions and draws is sustainable over the next five to 10 years. A Section 326 preparatory work. Preparation options for a tourist core Section 326 special levy and related reserves, identifying which tourist capital area project could reasonably be funded by that source. At tonight's meeting, I took it that perhaps the South tourist project could have been captured by a Section 326 reserve. And in closing, this is simply one resident's efforts to interpret the city documents and summarize them in plain language. If I was able to piece together, if I was able to piece this together through FOIs and spreadsheets, I'm confident the city can produce a clearer and more accessible picture for everyone. Before I step down, I would appreciate it if someone could briefly restate my four requests and indicate what actions may follow, just so I know I've expressed them clearly. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Burdette. So, um, how I would like to proceed now is I'd like to put the capital budget book on the floor, and then if anyone has any questions in regards to the capital budget book, we can go over those questions by council, and then after that, we will deal with the council amendments that are on the floor. So, Mr. Mayor, would you like to start with questions to the capital budget book?
Yeah, just the only thing I just want to draw attention to, it was mentioned about reserve transparency, and I just wondered if we could just maybe go to our CAO or our treasurer and just maybe address the transparency of our reserves, through your chair.
Sure.
Um, thank you through the chair, and, you know, we can certainly, um, always take a look at different ways to communicate. Um, the, the challenge is when, when you ask for something to be put in plain language, there are specific rules, accounting rules, and, and that's where public disclosure are. There's something called an FIR report, which, uh, is something that every municipality files that, uh, talks about some of the items that, um, Mr. Burdette, uh, put forward. Uh, I think that's the most transparent tool and comparison tool for municipalities to, to take a look at. Um, and, um, so I think that i- is one. I think it's better to ask questions on the FIR or specifically on audited financial statements that come to council versus trying to recreate, um, uh, the wheel, um, on reserve transparency. And, you know, with regards to the other ones, election cycle clarity, um, you know, one thing that's not talked about here, and, you know, everyone always thinks, uh, city workers are fat, dumb, and lazy and overspend. The reality is, uh, we have consistently, um, you know, been able to have, we do have some minuses on some projects, but the pluses, uh, normally outweigh the minuses. And over the last number of years, um, those close out. So it looks like it's election engineering, but in reality, what happens is you start off with some capital projects. So a lot of the projects here will be over a multi-year period. We get those savings and then we put them in to redeploy them. Um, with regards to sustainability checks, um, again, the FIR is a great tool for that. Uh, with regards to Section 326, it's always a decision of council. I find it interesting for someone, um, in the downtown because usually it's related to special services. One of the key items sometimes in special services is parking lot, uh, and parking. Downtowns traditionally don't have, uh, businesses that provide significant of their own parking. And normally what would happen is, usually you see it in the, in the reverse. You have people such as a Canadian Tire or Lowe's or whoever. They have to buy their land, they have to pay for their own parking, they pay property taxes on that parking. And they say, why does, you know, a downtown business not get, you know, have to do their own parking? They should have a special levy under Section 326. So I find it, you know, usually it's the opposite way. And with regards to the tourist core area, uh, the tourist core currently, you know, for stuff like waste management, they pay, um, a charge to the region for waste management, they have to pay for private collection. Um, and they pay some of the highest taxes. Um, you know, if I use the Hilton, for example, they pay for, they have the equivalent of about 1100 or 1200 homes, uh, but I only have to plow, you know, 200 feet of their street. Um, so I think when you start talking about special levies and special sections, it becomes very difficult because they'll start saying, listen, I'm paying for a lot of stuff that I don't receive. I don't use pools, I don't use libraries, I don't use this stuff. I have a very small component of the street, and I'm, and I'm effectively subsidizing, uh, the city. So Section 326 can, um, be fairly dangerous on that. I'm not sure if Ms. Clark has anything on the transparency item.
Yeah, thank you. Um, through the chair, I do just want to point out one thing, and perhaps the timing didn't really align when Mr. Burdette did his work, but on last week's agenda, there was the 2024 variance report. I know it was just on the consent agenda, and, um, our CAO kind of got up and spoke about how we'd been behind and we're getting caught up. There is, uh, Attachment 8 has got the reserve balances as at December 31st, 2024. And within the financial implications, um, section of the, uh, report, it, there's a, quite a detailed write-up on the reserves, and it specifically does outline the various types of contributions that flow into them. So, um, although that's not a forward-looking forecast, it is, it is closing the, the loop on the prior years. And this has been consistent with, this would have been in my 2023 variance, 2022. So all the past history is, is in that report that residents might find helpful.
Okay, uh, thanks, Mr. Burgess. Thanks, Ms. Clark, for that clarification. I know the other item that was brought forward was in regards to debt. And I know that Mr. Dowling kind of alluded to it before, uh, in terms of the change in policy and taking on debt. And it was actually myself who brought it forward and said, you know, I don't really think that we should be taking on debt for very small projects. We're taking on a million here, two million there, and it seemed like every year we were adding four and five million. And my comment was, you know, we should stop with this practice and we should only do it when, when we have very, very large assets. And so staff actually came back last year with, uh, with a report where we changed the actual policy, and we said that we were gonna go towards, you know, greater assets, uh, ones that are of larger size before we take on debt. So it really has nothing to do with the actual election. It has to do with the change in policy that this council adopted. So, uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for the question, and thanks, staff, for the clarity. I have Counsel LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had some specific questions. On page 17, the consolidated summary, um, this goes to development charges. I know earlier Counsel Nuisteg was talking about development charges. I brought it up a few meetings ago about some of the challenges that we're having. We're told that, um, developers are not building as quickly or as much, and our development charges are, um, are less, that we can't really rely on them for cash flow. And I know Mr. Dowling has explained that as well. Um, I'm suggesting that we revisit, uh, the receipt when we receive them and when we're spending them. To work on a 10-year development charge study, a lot of things can happen within 10 years. I know we've had discussions about, um, possibly changing some of the buckets of money. Uh, can we swap certain projects? I think it's worth a discussion, so I, I hope that at another time, um, Mr. Dowling and I were talking about development charges, um, through the, through the chair to Mr. Dowling, if we can come back with some of those ideas that you were talking about. I think that would give us a clearer picture what the development charges, um, challenges are and what we can do for them.
Okay, and, and just to point out, I think it's the, the 10-year, uh, the 10-year DC, um, is in regards to the background study.
Correct.
Not in regards to the charges. So I think the charges are updated every single year, but I'll let Mr. Dowling answer.
Yes, through the chair, that's correct. So our current study was done in 2024, so it's a 10-year study. Um, in the past, uh, there was a mandate that we needed to update our development charge background study on a five-year cycle. Uh, the province has changed that to a 10-year cycle, so it's something that staff will continue to monitor. Um, you know, as, uh, as Counsel LaCoco and I had discussed, it's, um, with, with the way DCs work, you know, it's like most studies, it's done at a point in time. So it was done with all of the assumptions and all the information we had at our disposal, um, almost two years ago. So, um, staff will continue to monitor. If there's large changes in assumptions that need to be considered, we can certainly, um, you know, have some discussions on, on what the appropriate steps to take would be at that time. Um, what I will say is, staff is also working with the development community on different types of programs. I know Ms. Dolch's team is working on several. Mr. Nichol's team is also working, um, on a DC credit program that we're looking at launching soon. Um, we're sort of in the final stages, but that'll be a really powerful tool for the development community and, and for the city, frankly, to allow some large infrastructure projects, um, to proceed at the developer's expense in return for receiving development charge credits, uh, when they start pulling the permits. So it'll be a powerful tool for us to help align the timing a little bit better. And I think that's sort of what I've been hearing from council this evening, both from Counsel LaCoco and from Counsel Nuisteg, is there, there's that concern of that cash flow piece. And I think, you know, being able to partner with the development community on a program of that nature might provide an opportunity to help in some of those instances. It might not apply to everything, but, um, it's another tool that staff is considering.
Great, thank you. On page 105, um, there's Montrose Road and Bigger Road for the land acquisitions. Um, just in general, um, I was wondering if staff could bring forward a report of the cost that it's cost for the hospital so far to date. Just in general, I was wondering if staff could bring forward a report of the cost that it's cost for the hospital so far to date. Obviously, we need a hospital, but I would like to see, and residents would like to see, a itemized list of what the costs have been for the land, for the pledge, for the infrastructure. And I know it gets difficult when we have different development, infrastructure, because there's development out there. How do you balance between what's for the hospital and what's for the development? I would just like to see, and, and many residents are asking, what have we spent to date to have the hospital here? It is a regional hospital, but Niagara Falls is carrying a lot of the, the, the cost and the debt for it.
Do we have any, anybody that could address this?
I, I don't need it right now. It's going to be,
You're just saying direction.
Direction to staff, is that something that we can bring forward later? I don't need it right now.
So, so maybe why don't we do this, because it might be a little bit of work. Why don't we put it in a form of a motion?
Okay, thank you.
And we can direct that to staff.
Okay, my motion would be that we get an itemized listing of the expenses for the hospital. That's including land, the pledge, infrastructure, and try to divide it up between what's for the new development, the growth development, and the hospital.
Okay. Do you have a second here for this? Counselor Baldinelli, any discussion to the motion? Uh, yeah, we got a question first, then we'll go on that. Yes, Counselor?
I just have one question. How will the, I understand the report and I, I get it, that what the Counselor Kokko is asking, but the road, or money we're spending on a road widening, everything else, that's going to affect every developments coming across the way. And that's what she's asking, how, how would that report work? I'm not sure. Can I just get some direction?
Yep, Mr. Nichol.
Yeah, thank you. We were trying to figure out timing here, so I missed the first part of it, Counselor. We can look at our actuals and our expenses. There's still some things outstanding. We know the region invested heavily in that project as well. So we would just, just for clarity, we look at city-owned costs, so city costs. Not sure if you want to know where funding sources were used, because some of that was development charge related. A large portion of our road widens were developed related, so we can do our best to bring all that stuff back. Oh, that's not something we can split out. It's all, it's all bundled together. And, and I think we understand that the hospital is that catalyst to grow the other areas. So it's not really our preference to break that out.
Okay. As long as it's noted that this is not 100% for the hospital, that there's all the other development, that would be fine. It's just an up-to-date list.
Yeah, I understand. Mr. America, if you will, we invested heavily in some sewer and water infrastructure that is meant to enable all the, the land around that hospital. So we can report on that, but I don't want it to be misconstrued that, that's specifically for the hospital. It's for everything, including the hospital.
And as long as the report states that, I think people will understand. Okay, thank you.
Our CAO just wanted to go in on, we haven't voted on it yet.
Yeah, just for clarity, to make a complete picture, I think it would be advisable that, you know, the anticipated pill DCs, building fees that the hospital and the surrounding land would generate, you know, should be also part of it so that you can see the full picture.
Okay, so you guys, you heard the motion by Counselor Kokko, the second by Counselor Baldinelli, asking staff to come up with a report on some of the expenditures we've made to date around the hospital, knowing we can't totally separate it from, from growth in that area, but for an update on some of our investments in, in three cycles.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so one opposed. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you very much. On page 173, Fireman's Park Improvement, I know we have a great partnership.
Did he have to leave, was he a conflict?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he had to go to the bathroom. Okay, I was bringing him in. I didn't, I thought maybe he had a tummy ache. I wasn't sure. So, so somebody wants to, I can't leave and grab him.
Okay. The Fireman's Park Improvement, I know we have a wonderful relationship with the Stanford Center Volunteer Firemen, and they take care of the park, they rent out the property, we own it, they have a lease. I, I guess the question that I have, there, there's a balance between us putting in more money to improve things, but there's also the balance of them being able to make money for Stanford Center Volunteer Firemen. So I guess my question is, is there going to be a discussion about moving forward that we're putting in X number of dollars to do extra things at the park that now they'll be able to make money on? I'm just trying to balance between taxpayers' money and then another group, even though the group is wonderful, they, they take care of the property. Are, are they able to make money, extra money because of the improvements that we're making?
Well, I'll just ask Mr. Nichol to weigh in on this, because ironically, they are putting together a long-term investment plan. I think this year we've got only $50,000 in for Fireman's Park. It's a very small amount for 120-acre park. And also, the fact is that they're all volunteers who cut the grass for us at that park.
Right.
So the value we get back in return is immeasurable. But I know ironically, I just saw the report come through, so we'll ask Mr. Nichol to address that.
Just before Mr. Nichol does address it, in the, a 10-year forecast for 2028, it was 200,000, and for 2029, it was a million. So it wasn't just the 50,000 I was thinking about, it was the forecast as well.
Yeah, but for this budget, it's 50,000.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just asking in general.
Okay, Mr. Nichol?
Yeah, thank you. Through the mayor, or chair to the counselor. We have done a preliminary asset management style and assessment of the structures in that park. We own it, we're the landlord, we're responsible for those leasehold type of improvements. So that means the pavilions, the parking lots, those areas that are, I'd say, become capital expenditures is, is on the city to upgrade and maintain. I mean, the mayor said it very well, we have a great relationship with the group, and they're hosting events that the community can benefit from, and for a small amount of money, they're maintaining all of those lands. So what we're looking to do is to develop a five-year program, yeah, hand-in-hand with the Volunteer Firemen's Association. That's in the works. We're also looking at other potential partners, such as those who, we had a developer help with the cleaning of the pond this past year. Those types of developments will only, and not developments, partnership will only be possible if we have a plan and if we have a position of strength to go and negotiate and to sell a plan to people who want to invest in the park for those types of improvements. So I guess to the, to, to sort of help with some of that answer, we have an obligation to do some of this work. And the second thing is, we want to make sure the investment in the, the work that was done just this past year isn't gone to waste. We want to make sure that pond is healthy going forward. We want to make sure we can expand on the day camps that are being used there. And we also know that there's a potential to link with the Mewburn Mountain Road landfill site to create a bit more of a larger recreational area. So there's so much potential, Counselor. We're investing in incremental ways, but I think those will be returned significantly over time.
Thank you. It's wonderful to hear that we've started the conversation, that there's a program in place that we're working towards. That's great. I guess this other one is for Mr. Nichol as well. Starting at page 203 for the fleet replacement, we have $3.2 million. I guess my question is, for replacement of a small car, medium car, larger vehicle, what is the standard for end-of-life replacement? Some people think, in, in my household, I'll keep my car another one year, another two years to let, let it go, and then I don't have to pay for it for one or two years. Is that something that we look at with our fleet replacement? It wouldn't make it that much of a difference by extending it one year or two years, balancing the cost of repairs and not having to purchase another one at that point?
Yeah, through the chair, that's a great point. We do use those metrics. Our, our small type of passenger vehicles have an eight-to-10-year replacement schedule. But we don't just base it on, based on the age. We will look at the kilometers, the hours, to make sure that it's, it's available to be used. A car that's always in the shop is, is a useless car for us, and we need to make sure we can deliver those services. So we generally start with an eight-to-10-year replacement schedule, and then we'll do some refinements year over year. And then every single year, we look at every single vehicle that is coming up on that initial replacement schedule, and we'll make that decision based on actual figures. We'll meet with user departments to ask the question if that vehicle's meeting the needs or not. We know that they, the replacement value is going up, it's escalating. The resale value is not really escalating, but we want to make sure it's not, you know, going past the tipping point on resale. So it still has some residual value when we're done with it.
Thank you. Through the chair, that was my, you led right into my resale question. Maybe that would be something within the budget that we could see the money that you get from auction that is going to offset that, that fleet replacement with auction money coming in. I did speak with Ms. Clark about that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair. And that money, we actually bring that into the operating budget in the Fleet Responsibility Center, Cost Center, if you will. And that does fall to the bottom where it then gets transferred to the Fleet Replacement Reserve. We can probably do, I guess, a better job, but we can, we can make a point in the business case to write what last year's sales were that are contributing to that.
Great, thank you. You led right into my next question about a business case scenario. On a lot of them, specifically starting at page 205 and then some of them after, it specifically talks about a business case about why council would approve something. It talks about more efficient, less resources, less labor. I think that's great to have that business case there, and it will help us decide. But on the flip side, I'd like to know if it actually came to fruition. Was it more efficient? Was it less labor? Is there a way that we can receive reports based on these business cases? Because it's great for us to approve it, but if it doesn't actually come through, is it really efficient? I don't know who would like to answer that.
I will start. It's, you know, it's how much work do you want to put into it? So, you know, if we report back on each business case on the efficiency gain, I would have 100 auditors creating that. And I think, I think what we need to do a better job at is, and we're not there yet, and the new system is coming. And I'm going to say this, and three people won't want to shoot me, because it's a phrase I have for the last year, is we are developing a, we call it dashboards and frameworks of KPIs, the key KPIs. So there would be one on, you know, efficiency, which is resources over output. Cost efficiency, so cost over the output, user stuff. And I think that's the better way for council to track and for us to manage it. So for, I'll pick on, because Kathy's been quiet all night, hasn't had a question, I'll pick on Kathy. You know, so, you know, she might, in our aquatics program, she might have KPIs that council should know about is, you know, how many, how much revenue per hour of the pool? How often is the pool down? How often is it available? Those are the things that, you know, that council should see, and we should set those standards. And, you know, then we don't have to track each individual case, but you, you can see the overall thing. So, you know, Counselor, you've done your homework, so that's, that's, you know, it's a good question. But I just think it would be impossible to do that at this point in time. I think it's better to do it kind of at the strategic level. And I'm sure both Mr. Etherington and Ms. Darlington, who put her head down when I knew where it was going. I'm hoping to have that primarily in place in 2026 and really moving forward in 2027 with, with some of the KPIs and frameworks for each department. And I think that's a great way for council to manage our efficiencies.
Thank you very much. KPIs and statistics and data about how we're running things are great. I'm just looking at it from a budget. Here's a solo, solo report that's saying, here, approve this because of this, this, and this. Here's the efficiency. But then we don't hear about how they worked out. So that, that's all I'm saying. However, we get the information, that would be good. Page 221, the EV chargers. I've, I've been doing a lot of research on this, and I know we have grants, and I know there's, part of it is with the Niagara Parks Commission. But we've already heard in our parking budget that getting this EV chargers may reduce parking revenue. We've heard about some of the tourist parking already being decreased. We've heard about the gas station cars not coming in. So I'm looking at, I'm looking at the 4, 4.3 million. EVs are not selling as much as they used to. Our government has changed some of the grants and the targets of when we're supposed to hit certain things. Every time I drive by an EV charger, I might see one or two. So I guess my question is, is it really time to invest in this? I know that we will have to, but is, is this the right time? Can we do half of the project now, maybe half of the project in the next year? I, I don't know. I just wanted to put it out there for some discussion, because I'm not quite sure if this is the right time. I know we've had it on our radar for a while, but things have changed.
I'll start, and I'll have Mr. Nichol support. And if it said that in the report, it is the opposite, because Paul Brown believes that parking revenue will go up. It's based upon a 10% utilization of it. And you, you may see parking, like EV chargers empty, you'll also see parking spots empty. And no one ever says, well, those parking spots are empty, and therefore it's not being used, we should not have that parking spot. But the, the utilization, and it will differ based upon the type of charger. Mr. Nichol can provide a bit more comment on that. So they strategically looked at places where you'd want fast charge or slower charge ones. We went through a much larger analysis with the folks, cut down the numbers that we were going forward with in a budget. But in this case, we believe that it's a 10-year payback on that infrastructure going forward. On the macro issue with regards to electric vehicles, you know, that debates there. What I, what I see from the statistics is last year, it, you know, it used to be about one in five cars. It's down to about 13% of the cars now sold in North America. Last year were electric vehicle, but every place else other than North America, it's, electric vehicles are increasing. So depending on the new round of government funding or what else that comes up, you might see a difference in, in that. And, and I don't drive an electric vehicle, other people here in this do, so I, I won't get into that debate one way or the other. But, but we also have, we also have to look at, you know, is that the infrastructure we want? We think we went to it with a moderate business case on that. Parks also came to the same conclusion, where they believe that they should have some of those EV chargers in. So we don't believe it's going to lead to a decrease in parking. In fact, if Mr. Brown was here, he would think that those would be the premium spots that you'd make more money off of in the, in the long term. We did reduce it, and I'll see if I missed anything that Mr. Nichol, I pop up. And the one thing I will say is, a lot of it is just putting the infrastructure in. And so whether you have four parking spots or two spots, most of it is the infrastructure in the ground that you have to put in there. So reducing a couple of parking spots might not save you as much money on the project as a whole.
Yeah, thank you. And through the chair, we're hearing from the industry that 10% EV readiness is a target for parking lots now. That meaning, you know, a hundred space parking lot may have 10 EV spaces. Maybe not today, but over time, so they're, they're pre-engineering some of these parking lots for that 10% utilization. Now, you know, we've been funded by the province on this program. The funding was well oversubscribed, meaning the more people applied for this funds than were approved. And the province used their own metrics to determine the best locations per our applications. Not all of our locations we submitted for were approved. In some locations, we've taken out, we've taken out the Chippewa Arena, because it's not going to be, meet the timelines with the potential replacement of the, of the arena. We've taken out Fireman's Park because the utilization's low. We're looking at best case, three-year return on investment, worst case, about eight-year return on investment for assets that have about a 10-year lifespan. And that's because we have grants over 50% funding from the province and from, and our can on this. So with the, the economics wouldn't work the same if these funding, if the funding wasn't the same. But we also know that it can help shoulder the revenue in the off-season, so in the, in the winter season, where we have areas like in our tourist core, there aren't very many charging opportunities. That means we're the prime destination, which means we get the parking revenues and the, and the charging revenues. So I think to the, to the CAO's point, we, we don't know all the answers to this. We've taken a fairly modest approach, and, you know, we feel confident that there is a return on investment in terms of charging people to use the services that we would provide in this program.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to balance needs and wants and go from there. Just a couple more questions. On page 299, we can go to Ms. Maldenhauer. This is the 10-year recreation plan. I look at the 2021 to 2031 current plan that we have, and we're already, we're halfway through it. Is it wise to do it halfway through it to start preparing the next one? Because there can be a lot of changes within, I know you have to prepare ahead of time, but five years into it is half of the 10-year plan. Should we do it maybe next year or the following year? Do we need to start now?
Through to the chair, thank you. The Recreation Parks Plan that we did back in 2021, we have accomplished some of the initiatives, but our community has significantly changed during the five years. The growth that we have experienced, the McBain Community Center, now that the city operates the full building. When we started this plan, the YMCA had just exited. When we completed this plan, the exchange hadn't been completed. We do identify some emerging needs such as cricket, but I believe we've but I believe we probably even need more than the one cricket pitch that is recommended in here. We probably need a couple cricket pitches. So there's a lot of changes to our community and this is why honestly that we're recommending that we do this update at this time. Last week, I did attend the Parks and Recreation Ontario Conference. I did talk to several consultants about five-year versus 10-year master plans and they were telling me with the rate of change that many communities are experiencing, the trend is now a five-year plan. They're finding in a 10-year time period, there's so many things that are changing in our communities that obviously I know they're consultants and they want to get paid, but they highly recommended a five-year plan over a 10-year plan.
Thank you. That led right into my next question about a five-year and a 10-year plan. And I think I've seen that with many of our other master plans. When you do 10 years, everything is changed by the time you get to the middle and then you're just sort of going for the next couple of years. So that led into my question. Okay. And the last question, and I'll have some comments later. On page 321, under the deferred, it's the Whitman Bridge, 600,000 for the upgrades for the light. And it says it's contingent on fundraising and donations. And then I got a little confused because in the report, it said that only 261,000 was contingent on funding and funding sources. This one is funding for fundraising and donations. Why isn't this one in the contingent one but says it's, it's deferred? If you look at the, so page 321, it's under deferred and there's no funding source, but it says it's contingent on fundraising and donations there, 600,000. And if you scroll down, there's no funding. But in the actual report on page five, it says there's only 261,000 of contingent projects. I just wonder why this wasn't considered a contingent project within the contingent section of the report.
And through the chair, I can speak to that. I think we might be mincing words a little bit on what's a contingent project and what's a deferred project. The very first, the most important thing to mention is that our prioritization projects, put projects up at the top and some at the bottom. The, the reality is this project does not have confirmed funding sources from external sources or even has some contemplated funding sources and partners, but nothing that we can attach a firm dollar figure to today. So we wouldn't be able to fill out the business case with firm contributions that are contingent on the project moving forward. So it moved to the deferred list and given that the fact that it wasn't quite of the same priority as some of the other projects, it wouldn't jump ahead of the Rowood projects, for example. We are still working with Niagara Parks on a potential angle to look at doing two bridges together. I have a concept plan underway now that will help inform the funding and the budget. And like a lot of our projects, having a concept, having a 30% or 60% design is critical in securing any of that funding. And so we're still working through some of those things right now with the, some of the dollars we've cobbled together. And we feel that partnering with Niagara Parks to create a seamless design that integrates with the Winter Festival of Lights and that experience as you drive from the falls towards Chippewa is, could actually provide a really beneficial experience and could actually have some benefits of economy to scale. So staff are still working on some things in the background. Simply put, their, this project fell to bottom and there was no confirmed sources.
Okay, thank you. I, I know because it was a deferred project, I got concerned that maybe nobody was going to think about it for a while because it was under deferred. And if we do have fundraising and donations, that would be great to bring it up to the top. Those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I have councillor Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Chair, to Mr. Nichol, is about the roundabout question. Is 3.8 million dollars, is that our share or we'll be getting 50% back after?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, that is the gross cost. We will receive 50% back from the parks as part of our cash sharing agreement.
Perfect, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Dolch, about the last of studies on the, on our capital budget. And that was, the one thing was pointed out to me by residents that we are doing studies, for example, urban design guidelines and we are doing tourist and, tourist and employment land studies right now. We just finished our OP, so why are these studies required?
Thank you, councillor, from, through the chair to yourself. So we'll start with the urban design guidelines. So the official plan is a guiding document. Obviously, design guidelines go down to the, like the form base of, of development. So, so what it's going to look like, how it's going to interface with the street. That's not what the official plan does, it's a high-level document. So, so the official plan, our new official plan, will reference the urban design guidelines. And if we don't have urban design guidelines, obviously we won't be able to implement that, that section. Urban design is a very important thing for the city as a whole and for any city, in my opinion. Urban design creates a sense of place for people, a place where they want to live and, 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 you know, live workshop, what have you. And I did have, I don't know if Mr. Dallin can share the one presentation I had. I just want to show you the difference on urban design, just so you get a sense on, on what you see at council in, in an official plan and zoning amendment application and what we actually get at site plan stage. And you'll see the difference. Yeah, if you can just drop to the. And that's why we feel this is so important. So this is what you would have saw at council. You know, beautiful design, obviously met our design guidelines along, along Wendy's Lane in this instance. And then you drop to the next slide and that is what we're getting in right now. They don't meet the urban design guidelines, but this is why we feel urban design is so, so important. Because if we don't continue to press, this is what we're going to get. So I just want to, you know, that's why we're, we want to make sure that our official plan has the policies that support the urban design guidelines. And when we get an official plan amendment or zoning amendment, we can use the urban design guidelines to say, it's in our official plan. Here's the urban design document. You need to follow what it says. And I know we spoke on the phone, in terms of, there's certain developments that don't require urban design review and that, or site plan review, and that would be under 10 units. But anything over 25 units in the planning act, we can ask for exterior elevations. So just, just on urban design. On the studies, so on the studies, we're looking at, obviously, looking at tourism studies and the tourism studies relate to kind of what the province is looking at right now on, on special zones for areas. And in our tourist area, we want to make sure that, that we're, hopefully recognize this as a special economic zone, that we can kind of prepare for studies and let, and make sure that when people come in, it's seamless for them, they're not having to do a number of studies and that we kind of help and encourage development to occur in our tourism area, large-scale development. And then on the employment side, obviously along our Kiwi corridor, we really want to start to look at that. We want to be attractive to employers, be able to say to the province, we have land readily available. We've planned for it, we know we, we can make this work. So those are the studies we're looking at. Yes, they're a bit in the future, but if we don't start planning now, it won't be available and it does take time. Through you, Mr. Chair.
I, I know while ago, regional, region, region did dedicate some land around Kiwi W for the employment land. Did they not do the study or did we have to do our own study?
So through the chair to, to the councillor. So what the region did was put in a future corridor. And what that means is we can review it, but we still have to, we still have to bring it into a boundary. We can't, it really is just a placeholder, say, you know, in the future, we may look at this area, but it doesn't bring it actually in. In order to actually designate it, there's, there's rules under the provincial, provincial planning statement. So there's, there's certain criteria we have to do, we have to know it can be serviced. We have to know all these things in order to designate land. So we need to now go to the next step if we want to actually look at these areas. And it'll take time, but long-term, we want to make sure that these, these are ready and we've planned for them.
Good, okay. Are there any other questions of staff in regards to the capital budget book? Okay, if there aren't any other questions, then what we're going to do is we're going to move on to some of the amendments that were proposed. And I think staff have a schedule of how we're going to look at them or the order that we're going to look at them. So I think, Mr. Dowling, do you have the schedule there?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, I'm just going to bring up another presentation. So really quickly at a high level, oh, if it's coming up, there we go. We received 12 formal amendments submitted in advance by councillors around the table. What we've done is we've summarized them into slides. And what our plan is, is we will put up each of the amendments on screen. We'll allow the councillor to speak to their amendments. And then I'll look to you, Chair, to call for a secondar and then we can continue on with discussion from there. Just overarching in terms of the order, generally speaking, we've got these amendments in alphabetical order by councillor with two exceptions. We, two of the amendments, I'm sorry, I should say, two projects had multiple amendments brought forward by council, so we're dealing with those first. So they're a little bit out of sequence and then we'll return to alpha order. So if you don't mind, we'll start with councillor Strange's amendment if he'd like to speak to it.
Okay, thank you, Chair, Mr. Dowling. So this came about during the, going over the budget. And I guess, you know, a couple of months ago, we had a council meeting where we're discussing different options for a new arena with possibly turf field, some added other features. And they gave us kind of three different options, I guess it was at that time. Felt like we, and I think every councillor kind of felt like that was, it was a rushed in kind of discussion and that was our only option. So we, we kind of rushed into it, picked an option, but didn't want to go with that pricing, which was going to be, they were estimating between 50 and 60 million dollars. So since then, you know, I've been doing a little bit of homework. I've been, I've been talking with, with some other councillors and really kind of hashing out, you know, what we want, hearing from some of the, the residents that, you know, and where are we going to get this money from? You know, if it ends up being between 50 and 60 million dollars, we, we realize that we are getting a provincial grant, which is $10 million, which is amazing. And, and we know a lot of the communities have applied for this grant and we were lucky enough to get it. But I think, you know, it's one of those things, you know, you know, we'll, you know, we'll take 10,000 off your car, but it's going to cost 50,000. It's like, well, okay, that's, you know, you know, what does that do for you? And what does that do for the tax base for the next, you know, 30 years? I've had a lot of residents and, and a lot of elderly residents saying, you know, they'll never step, step foot in a, a new arena. You know, what's it do for them? And, you know, we're looking at possibly a 2% every year added on to our, our tax levy, which will be added on to, 2% added on to everything else. You know, affordability is so tough right now. And, and then, you know, I think it's needed. I think the arena needs fixing, but I think, you know, that the way to do it is, is kind of that repurposed kind of way to go. I've been talking a lot with councillor Baldenelli about a lot of stuff and he's, he's a hockey guy and a sports guy. I don't know anything about putting buildings up and stuff, but we've been doing a little bit of research and looking at a few different models. And the bottom line is we're looking more, bringing that cost down hopefully between, you know, that 20 and 25 million and have the same components that were, were promising the province. You know, with turf fields, sorry? Yeah, possibly a library, fixing the ice, all the infrastructure, as well as having possibly some basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts. And looking at kind of that structure, almost like the Kayla Road where we have that dome there, where we could add that on to the arena, attach it to, attach it to the, to our repurposed arena and we can have refurbished that arena with bigger dress rooms. Possibly, I don't know if we can do that or not, an NHL-sized rink, which councillor Baldenelli doesn't think we can do. Whatever, whatever we can do to, to, to really repurpose that. It's a great arena, you know, little towns love their old bars. They love their hockey barns. And you know, you know, you know what I'm talking about, councillor Baldenelli. And, you know, people always talk about playing in one of the original ice rinks. So I would hate to demolish this or turn into a turf field. And, and the main thing is, you know, we, we want to keep the cost down. So when I, I was looking at, you know, the Chippewa Arena progressive design build phase number one, first of all, you see a pre-approved for 945,000, which I, you know, and staff could probably help me out with this, where that, that has gone. And then plus they want $4 million for a design and, and go in and, and get the designs. But we don't, we don't know. Like I think unanimously, and I'll, I'll let some of the other councillors talk about it, we want that price down. And if we can do something where we can repurpose this arena, add something like a dome to it, bring that cost down, bring the tax base down and still get that $10 million grant. If we can, can you imagine at the end of the day, I think Tiffany Clark said we had another $5 million. On top of that, you add 15 into that and it's, and it's a 20 to 25 million. It's not such a hit to that taxpayers, especially the ones that may never have, you know, never walk in there. You know, and there's a lot of different stuff we can do. So my amendment is to, to hold and, and do not spend any additional funding until further council direction is provided. Staff will put that $4 million into reserve. If staff does need that, say, you know, if, if it does pass tonight and they need to go forward with whatever we're going forward with, with the design we're talking about and they need funds, then, you know, we have, we have a council meeting on December 9th. If we need something right away, they can, they can ask council to, and, and get a list of how much that money is, what they are going to do with the design and whatever it may be. And we could approve that budget on next meeting. So that is, is my amendment or recommendation.
Okay. Let me see if I have a secondar first and then I know that I have Mr. Burgess that wants to speak to that. So do I have a secondar for this amendment? Yes, I do. Okay, councillor Baldenelli. And I know Mr. Burgess wants to speak to it and open it up to council and see whether or not there's any other questions. I also wanted to mention that councillor Dubrowski is online. He's been here the entire meeting, so now is the important part. I know he didn't have any comments earlier, but now that we're going to get into voting.
Does he have a margarita in his hand?
I'm not sure. So just to let you know, councillor Dubrowski, we either need to see you or hear you or Ms. Corbett needs to see you or hear you in terms of voting. So you can click off on your mute button if you want. And then when we call the votes, we can ask you how you're going to vote on that. So, Mr. Burgess, I know you wanted to address it.
Thank you, councillor. You know, through the chair to the councillor, who's clearly done a fair amount of homework on this issue. I did just want to step back and just for clarity purposes, just make sure we're all on the same page. So the plan from staff was, as the council outlined, there was three options put out to the public with some very high-level estimated cost. I'll be frank, I don't believe in any of those cost estimates because I have very low confidence in those cost estimates. And I'll give just a really quick example of why it's very difficult to use a $650 per square foot cost over the whole item. If I were to just, you know, put AstroTurf over the cement existing pad, it's not going to cost me $650 if it's just that kind of quick renovation. Or if I make a gymnasium with a bump out, a gymnasium is just four walls with no windows. That doesn't cost 650. So that might cost 250, but the new build arena might cost $1,000 a square foot. It becomes a blended cost of 650. And just to be rest assured, there is no staff member here that is looking at creating any type of award-winning architectural features in, in, in this development. So we don't have, we had three concepts that went out to the public. There was one that was favored. There was no selection by council of a favored one because there was insufficient information for council to make a decision. The next step is, both for a speed point of view and also to give council more credible information, we're using a new process for going out to build this asset, which is a collaborative design build process. Under the traditional method, and I'll go back to the exchange and Kathy and some staff may have some scars from that experience. Under a traditional method, it's called a design bid build, where you have an architect that designs it, they create a bid. that designs it, they create a bid document, someone bids on it, and then they go and build it. And what happens is the builder in many cases will say, well, I wouldn't have designed the building that way, so it's going to cost you more, or you missed these things, here's an add-on. And it's a much longer process. Under this kind of approach, we engage both the designer and the builder at the same time. So when we're building a design, the builder can say, that's a dumb way to design it, or you should consider this, or we have this information. So that way you get to a better design quicker. And when they're then giving us pricing information, which we verify through other means, when I come to council and say, this option will cost this much, or this option will cost this much, I have a builder that's already looked at it and they've done the evidence. So the intent was never to, you know, as staff, we don't know what we're building or how we're going to construct it at this point in time. The intent was to go and explore all the different options for that. Originally, we were going to look at the three options, but more than happy to look at additional options, including alternative buildings on that. And actually it was brought up, we did engage Colliers Project Management. It was brought up recently by Colliers that there might have to be an assessment to be undertaken, quite frankly, to see whether renovating the existing one is actually more cost-effective. Because what you could potentially do is, the original plan was always to kind of build a new hockey arena structure next to the Chippewa, and then renovate the existing one. There might be thought that that renovation would be more expensive than just a prefab building again. So you'd demolish it, put it, so you'd essentially build two prefab buildings. And they're going to investigate that. The intent is, the intent was per the schedule to bring all that back in May-June to council. We could try to elevate that to try to bring back preliminary options and preliminary costing at a lower confidence level to council in the April timeframe. And then that will be council's decision. And, and so that, just to give council the framework, staff doesn't know what they're building at this point in time because we don't have good cost information on that. And we want it to be able to compartmentalize. And we didn't want to use the 650 dollars because you could say, well, get rid of 1,000 square feet of gymnasium space because you think that costs 650,000 dollars, when really it might have only cost 100,000 dollars. And you'd make, you would make, you know, less than optimal decisions on that. So that is the intent is, and just because the budget is in there for that, that's just really to start the project, does not mean we're going to spend all that on design and all that. It's just we are going to RFP it out. The target, I'm looking at Ms Darlington, the target is December for the RFP to go out with responses back in, in January. And then that way we engage them and then we look at all those options going forward. We are looking at, just to be very clear, we are looking at prefabricated buildings and renovation, or potentially two prefabricated buildings. And we're more than happy to add on the dome option and have some of those investigations that say, can you do it as a dome? And that would be direction to staff to undertake that additional option. So, you know, the only thing I would say with regards to the motion is, we need the ability to pay the designers and the architects to do that homework, to come back to council with really good information over the next four or five months, so that council can make much better decisions on that. So I, I hear, and I think all staff hear the, I use the term cheap and cheerful, and that's something staff knows here. So we, we do hear the concern, we have the concern. Quite frankly, that's why as staff, we didn't recommend option one several months ago. Because as staff, we were uncomfortable with the proposed price tag under that option. And that's why as staff, what we recommended was, let us go away and do some homework with third parties. Because even though that was the preferred option, that was, staff was uncomfortable with that option. That's why we never endorsed that as an option. We always endorsed moving forward to consider it, but to bring information back to council. So I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. We're not looking to go and spend 5 million dollars on designs, and we're not looking to do anything that's other than, you know. And I just, the other thing that we would stress and we come back is, I instruct my staff to look at total cost of ownership, which is, you may spend more upfront, but over the 25 or 30-year life, you may have lower cost of ownership. And we make those decisions. And some of those decisions, and some of those decisions are better answered by the actual contractors on different types of materials and that kind of stuff. So we appreciate the, we appreciate the direction of the council. We appreciate the fact that you're actually saying, can you look at some other potential structural options? And we would take that away. My only concern is, we do need to spend some money to move forward, you know, to get that information back to council. So the way it's written is it goes in the reserve and we've got to come back for, we'd be coming back, for example, for, in January, once the RFP is answered, to spend that. And then we're, we have to come back for each time. So we, we think it's, you know, prudent to go. And I think staff here has a good track record. Like I said, over the last couple of years, we've closed out and had savings on our budgets of over 11 million dollars in our capital projects. And I'm not sure if I missed anything, Ms Moldenhauer?
Councillor Strange?
Yeah, and, and thank you for that. And, and, you know, I, I'm doing the research and some research, and there's, you know, some consultants and some designs all over that we, that I can give to you and send to you. And some examples, you know, Edmonton, Newmarket, Stillfell? Stillfill? Stillfill? And a few other ones that we could kind of benchmark off. And, and then there, so we are already pre-approved from 945,000. And now do we still have that? Or is that, or is that spent?
Yeah, through the chair, I believe. And I'm going to look for confirmation. It's about half spent. Is that correct?
Through the chair. Spending-wise, I would say that's accurate. I do think that the engagement currently has committed the majority of the budget. It just hasn't all been spent under that engagement. But we've issued a, a purchase order, if you will, for, for the majority of those funds if needed.
What are the funds for?
This is the Colliers engagement that...
Oh, okay. So that's to hire Colliers?
Yeah, so we've hired Colliers as our project manager. They've built a number of arenas recently. So they're our project manager. And so they're managing the project plus managing the RFP process for us. And on top of those, we will have, they've had a due diligence list of requests that Travis and Rob have been working on. So there'll be further payments or further requests through POs to do the assessment on the existing building, soil, soil, what's it, compaction analysis, archaeological analysis, all those items that would have to be undertaken.
The design wouldn't be in that 945,000?
No, the, the design cost, that RFP will come out in January, or sorry, will be responded to in January. And then we'll know that amount at that point in time. But it's being done on a cost-plus basis on the design generally. So we would have an estimate of budget at that point in time.
Okay. I'm just going to let some of the other councillors weigh in.
Okay, councillor Carrion and councillor Patel, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And Jason, thank you very much. The staff's done a lot of work on this. And I, I came in a bit after this already started, but, you know, I've talked to most of the councillors. I don't want to mislead, and I don't think the rest of the council wants to mislead the staff or the consultants to thinking we're prepared to spend 50 or 60. I, I'm not prepared to spend 50 or 60 million dollars on this project. And from other councillors I've talked to, I think there's no consensus to spend anywhere near that amount of money. So I think that, I think we've, we've really, we're doing a little bit backwards. We, we should get a feeling from our council what they're comfortable to spend on the redevelopment of the Chippewa site. If it's a 20 or 25 million dollars spend, the design or what could be done with the design, or what we could get is going to be a heck of a lot different than if the consultants have in their mind that we're prepared to spend 50 or 60 million dollars. So I really think that the council, not to mislead anybody, has to come to grips with, what are we prepared to spend on this? What's it going to cost our taxpayers and are we happy with it? Because I don't, I've talked to a lot of taxpayers, and they're not prepared to spend a lot of money going forward on increased taxes to support this project. So I think, I think that we're just, we're just a bit high. And we should come to grips with what we're prepared to spend, which would make it a lot easier, a lot simpler for the consultants to zero in on it. And maybe it won't cost 4 million bucks. Maybe it'll cost a million bucks to come up with a proper design within that budget. I think we need a budget that we agree on before we spend the 4 million dollars. Not spend the 4 million dollars and, and then find out that we could have got 20 or 25 million dollar bill for, you know, half of that money. I mean, I've never done anything like this ever, and I've built a lot of projects. I've always decided what I had to spend, or how much money I could afford to spend, or how much of somebody else's money I could afford to spend before, before I decided to go down the path on, on doing drawings or estimates. So that's just my feeling. So I think somewhere between what Mike has got here and what we want to do, there's a, there's a deal. But I think we should, you know, be upfront with what the staff and the consults and say, look guys, we're about double what we're prepared to spend. If everyone else is in the same boat, I think we should speak up now and then we could go down that path.
Okay, thanks. I have councillor Patel and councillor Newstagg.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I think everybody around the horseshoe, we all agree on the one thing, that we do not like the price tag that we saw a few months ago. But I also want to acknowledge that most of the councillors have different idea of what they want to see in the arena. So I would say before we go out, and I spoke to Ms CEO earlier, let's all get together and see what we want to see. It's not just, just the price tag, that's, price is number one, but we all have to see what we want to see moving forward. Because we all have different ideas, we all hear different things. So let's see, come together to see what we want to see and see something that's very close to what we are trying to build, maybe there's arena, I think Ms CEO said earlier, was West Lincoln has similar arena. So maybe visit those sites to see if that's what we're looking for, before we can say yes or no to anything. That's the way I would say. And to that point, I want to ask Ms Moldenhauer that, how is that grant we got for 10 million dollars, how does that tie in to future development? Is it all 10 million we get, or is there some string attached to it?
Thank you. And through to the Chair. As I said before, we were very lucky to, to receive the 10 million dollars. There is some flexibility, but if we reduce the project significantly and only go with retrofit to the arena, we're not receiving 10 million dollars. So I, I do want to be clear with that. If we're looking at a project, say for example, around 20 million, the province will not provide us with 10 million. That, that won't happen. So again, there is some flexibility, but we have to remember the reason why we're moving at a different pace, a faster pace with this project, is we do have a time limitation as well with the province. And there is the, it's very clear in, in our draft agreement, that the 10 million dollars needs to be spent by a certain time period. And it's clear too in there what that money can be spent on. Say for example, only 20% of the funding can be spent on design costs. So there are limitations and, you know, we, we would lose some of the money, if not all the money, if we drastically change the design. And the, the project that we're talking about in West Lincoln, if everybody's ever been there, they do have a gymnasium with that space. They have a single pad, they have a very large library, they have a second floor, and they have multipurpose rooms. So there are lots of different options that, that you can consider when you're looking at a building. The south end of the city is growing. And we do have to remember, we're not just building for today. I know it's cliche, but we're building for the future. And we do have to look at the future of our community and what our community really needs. I know I was asked about our 10-year recreation and culture plan. In that plan, already it states for a city our size, we should have two gymnasiums. We have one at McBain and we're counting one at the Boys and Girls Club. But as we continue to grow, we're going to need more gymnasiums. Communities that are smaller than we are do have an indoor turf. We don't have an indoor turf facility, so that's probably going to be a growing need as well. And that's identified in our plan. And then of course, we, we do have a library. I know many people come to McBain. And McBain Community Center, I feel is really a great example of a community hub. We are bringing people together of all ages throughout our community. And this really truly is, is our goal to create that in Chippewa. So again, not looking just for today, but also into the future. I know the costs are high and we've been very clear with our consultants that looking at a facility, 60 million dollars is not going to work. So believe me, we have been clear and we do want to keep the price of this project down.
Thank you. And through you and Mr Chair to, I don't know, I'm not sure who answered that, if it's Mr Dowling or Ms Clark, is, I wasn't here when we approved the Gail Center. How was that process then? That's, I was, I just want to hear how we did that, how much it costed and how we found it that.
Thanks. Through the Chair. I wasn't here to know the process, I can speak to the costing. So the Gail Center, based on our costing sheet, looks like we started spending some small amount of dollars in 2005, with a large amount of the spending occurring in 2009, 2010. The total project was 40.1 million dollars. That was financed from various sources, including a 32.8 million dollar debenture. That debenture is a 30-year debenture that we brought onto our books in 2011. So it is still on our books to this day. I believe it expires in 2041. That answered?
Are you good councillor? Okay. And I like the idea of visiting places. I have councillor Newstagg, Baldinelli and Coco.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to confirm, did you say the Gail Center costs 40 million dollars and we built that 15 years ago?
Yeah, that's correct. 40.1 million and it looks like we finished building it around 2011.
So every time this subject comes up, it seems like we go around in circles. We, I think we all agree it's too much money, but yet we all want everything. So every time we, I think, I don't know how many times we've had this conversation, but we end it without going anything further. So what I've just heard, we have great ideas between councillor Strange and councillor Baldinelli. They're trying to figure out how we can do this relatively, with some different options relatively. Councillor Carrion saying, let's get a budget. We work from a budget. Councillor Patel saying, let's go out and look at things. So I think we need to start making some decisions here. And then we also have this 4 million dollar, which I put an amendment into. So my, if there's any statement I want to say is, I think, and then we're also hearing from Ms Moldenhauer, that we are to hurry up and do everything. I think the first recommendation right now is, we have to proceed with caution. This is a very expensive project. It's something we want to do it once, we want to do it right. It is a very long, at long-term, it's not something that we're going to replace in five years. So to everyone's point, I think, yes, start with a budget that say, as low as we can possibly go, that we still get the 10 million dollars. So I'm not even clear how that 10 million dollars comes to us. Like, we hear 10%. So I think we really need to know the parameters and the, the statement from how that 10 million dollars is going to be given to us. Because we don't want to lose 10 million dollars. But then again, it's like you go shopping, you don't want to buy something just because it's on sale. You can say, I, I'm good at that. But it really does not work that, look, I say 40 dollars because I spend 100. That's not really the way to do it. So if we can take everyone's, we, number one is we need to spend the least amount possible. We do not want the taxpayers, we understand that the 60 million is not going to be there. To councillor Patel's point, I think we start to go around and look at what it is, but we need to have pricing attached to it. And then maybe we do leave some, we leave this money in as a reserve, but without committing to it, without just saying you can go spend it. We want a, a report back periodically. And actually, we want you to come to us saying, how, what, we need this much money right now to advance to this stage, this is what we're getting from it. So we're not going out spending all this money haphazardly. So that is my recommendation, that we proceed very cautiously, because we want to do it once, we want to do it right, and we want to be extremely responsible to the taxpayer and not overspend. And maybe it's a, a thing where we just can't have everything we want. So that's my recommendation, is we still need to have some money, because we need to spend money to figure out what it is. But it has to be spent responsibly, not just a carte blanche with 4 million dollars.
Okay. Just to, just to clarify, I, I think that's the motion that's on the floor. And I'll let councillor Strange speak to it, but I think his motion is asking us to approve the 4 million, but then let staff come back with reports telling us how they're actually going to spend the money before the money goes out the door. And I think, I'll let councillor Strange speak, like, am I wrong about that?
And I think my amendment's much the same. So the two of them sound very much, very similar. I have a following amendment right the next page. So that's why I'm speaking to it at this point too. I have a following amendment right the next page. So that's why I'm speaking to it at this point too. We're both saying to proceed cautiously with the staged approach leveraging grants. So we're saying the same thing.
Okay. I have Counselor Baldinelli and Counselor Lacoco, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Mr. Burgess for his explanation. I just was a little confused on the monetary amount that you were going to spend. Is it $9.75 now or that's already been done or you only spent half of that? And the $4 million is for future development. Correct. And obviously through your savings in the past, which I didn't realize and you've done very well. I'm not sure that he can, can you move forward by coming to council all the time? Or can you retort?
That's a good question. I would say, because if we have to come to council every time we spend, it's a three-week delay every time we need to spend some money. And that, I, I think you, Counselor Nuisteg said that Kathy wants to hurry up and, and that is a challenge if we, my suggestion potentially is if you could say, well, we're comfortable with a million and a half today, that you don't have to come back, but then you have to come back. We can report on what the cost estimate is from the RFP in January. We know we have some due diligence work that we're doing. So at least this way, we don't have to slow the project down because speed, time is of the essence and we need to get that information to council. So it's an intuitive question, Counselor Baldinelli, that's the challenge with every time we have to come, it's three-week delay, three-week delay, three-week delay. So we're comfortable doing that. I just think we need some ability to move because the, like I said, the RFP is going to come out and we'll want those people to start ASAP.
So I think in, we, we, we need to actually have that fund or the funds available.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, you know, we, we're, we have a meeting in two weeks. They can, I'm sure that they can come back with a pay structure and add it up and say, you know, we need 1.5 million dollars to get this off the road. We don't even know if, if it's, if the budget's going to even pass tonight. So how are you going to get those funds regardless? You know what I mean? So we have no idea. So if we can just get whoever it may be to give us a, a budget guideline, this is what we need in the next, how many weeks, we can pass that in the next meeting. No problem.
We wanted, we, we want the project to go forward, you know.
This, this, we are not canceling anything. It, you know, it pauses the check writing, not the vision. You know what I mean? It forces staff to study the cheaper model, you know, refurbish an old arena, plus a dome, plus a library, plus pickleball, plus tennis, plus a basketball court, turf field. We, we have it all in these domes. It's, it's just reducing the price, you know, from a fifth, from a 60 million to a, to a 15 to 25 million. It protects the, the $10 million provincial grant. The amendment specifically instructs staff to confirm the grant eligibility under alternative plan and, and have the problems. Because we got everything that we wanted in the initial redevelopment. We're going to have with the dome and refurbishment of all arena, if that's what we're going with.
Okay. So, you know, like, like everybody's been saying, you know, measure twice, cut once, for sure. You know, trust staff, you know, I'm sure they're not going to misspend money. So we, just like Mike said, you know, we can change things so that we can allot them the money to move forward because of the timelines. It would be great. The reduction of the, of the, the arena, I don't, I'm not sure. It's 200 by 85 is an NHL style rink, but I don't think that's the make and break myself. I played on that ice for many years. I said excellent ice is actually harder than the ice that's found at the Gale Center. It's wide enough. It's long enough for practice facility. We're not hosting any NHL games and if we do, we're doing it at the Gale Center. So even when we have large tournaments that, I belong to a couple of teams that run at the Gale Center and then we have games at Chippewa and we don't have anybody coming back with complaints about the ice or the boards or anything else. Most of the complaints are the dressing rooms. And that's been complained about for years and we did the addition and put the showers in there. And I'm thinking, you know, we refurbished that arena, we do the inline if it's possible. I don't know about the width. If it's not wide enough, my understanding is you can't make it an NHL style rink. But if it's wide enough, you can increase the length. That's the possibility. We were looking for different options to save everybody's, especially the taxpayers, but give them what they need versus what everybody wants. And the indoor can provide the basketball courts or pickleball courts or half of soccer fields or anything that's a practice facility indoors. Connect with change rooms. It's a great idea. And, and like I said before, we do partial, keep the costs low. And if we need to add a gymnasium, you know, you save money and when you have the money, you build that. You can make it modular, make sure the piping, everything. So I agree with Mr., with Counselor Strange and I appreciate Mr. Burgess's information about the cost and the spending. And I think we're on the right track and, and visiting different facilities would be also a great idea as well. So everybody's put down some great information and I think if we work together, we can get a good project going and that's beneficial to the taxpayers.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. Counselor Lacoco, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we filed the application for the grant, I was a little bit concerned because when you file for grants, it's very specific. You get specific money for specific things. As Counselor Nuisteg said, it would be very interesting if we can see what the grant, how it was written and how the funds are attributed to what is in there. Because once you do go and change it, then things change. We also have to look at development charges. There's only certain development charges that are allowable over a certain square footage. So for example, the library in Chippewa was 5,500 square feet. Anything above 5,500 square feet, you can use development charges for. If you leave it at 5,500 square feet, then you don't get any development charge used. So I just want to put that out there that we should know what was in the grant and how, how we're moving forward. I really don't want to spend $4 million just to find out what we're doing or that we don't want to proceed forward. So I like the, the motion on the floor that we proceed with caution, come back December 9th. I think this is a needs and a wants thing. We really have to figure out what do we need, what do we want? I know we talk about growth in the south end of, of the city. However, we've talked about the wastewater treatment plant. If that doesn't get approved, we're not going to be able to build houses and there's not going to be growth. So again, we have to balance with what is going on with that. I, I look at balancing, we talked about the parking structure. In the forecast, it says $45 million for a parking garage down here on Bridge Street. And then I think about the arena. Do we want to spend 45 million on an arena? Do we want to spend 45 million on a parking garage? Do we want to spend 25 on an arena? Needs and wants and what is the community benefiting from most? If there are challenges with go ridership and tourism coming, do we want to spend $45 million? I know we talked about parking for the 4,500 Park Street. We also talked about parking for the university personnel and students. Those are things that we, we have that money forecasted. What do we want to spend it on? I think we need to look at that. A couple of other things here, let's see. I, I agree with Counselor Nuisteg. We don't want to spend 50 million just to get 10 million. I, I really don't think that. And then when we were looking at refurbishment, do we have, when we were looking at our bill building condition, can building condition assessment from before, what was the cost to refurbish the existing arena right now? Can someone please tell me that?
I think I had to miss Mulder-Harrett, Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, and again, there's, there's some sensitivity around the, or confidence issues around the numbers. But it's, you know, it's likely $11 million for same for same, which means you're not doing AODA compliance and all that other stuff. So it's really, you need to add that because generally when you become AODA compliant, you're adding 20% increased square footage just to accompany that. So, you know, that's one of the challenges for that.
Okay, thank you. So if we look at $11 million plus AODA compliance on top of that, refurbishing what we have, adding domes or modular that we can keep adding to, I think maybe that's the way to go. I like the idea about visiting other communities, see what they, they have. We can approve this on December 9th. I really don't want to spend a $60 million price tag. Again, needs and wants, where are we spending our money and what, what are taxpayers benefiting from? Thank you.
Okay. I do have another speaker, but I have Mr. Burgess that wants to address one point.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I just want to be cautious because we do want to take a real assessment on that. So one of the things is the cost benefit analysis of, does a refurbishment of the existing Chippewa building actually make sense from a cost point of view and a longevity point of view? So that analysis of whether it would cost more to renovate and not have as good of a product, where it would just be easier to demolish, put up a prefab construction, is something that we have to analyze when we have the, there and we have people on the, on the limit. And just to Mr. Baldinelli's question, we're 85 by 185, so we're 15 feet short in length of, of an NHL sized arena. Yeah, so it's just the length in Chippewa, not the width of Chippewa. The challenge with Chippewa, and you know it, it's very tight on the sides and the, you would have to expand because the change rooms have no place to expand at this. But, but when you, you have to remember, again, this is where people say, oh, you just do a bump out. When you bump out any building, you got roofline issues, you got HVAC issues, you got other issues that you have to assess. And that's why I don't want to play Bob the Builder because we'll get into trouble with that. So.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Burgess. I have Counselor Patel.
Mr. Chair, I just thought of something when Counselor Lacoco was speaking is, can we use the DC charges for the arena?
You could both in.
I'm going to, not for the hockey arena itself, for the ice surface, because it's same for same and, but for some of the other items that we're looking at, yes, because there's, it's a net new item. I may push the logic of whether a, I've actually increased the service level to a NHL sized arena, but you'd be getting very minor aspect to that. But it's really the other items that are in the proposal that you can get the DC funding for.
Thank you. I think we all agree on that we don't like the price of the arena, but I think we all need to come together to see what we want to see. Because we always, we also have to see that what we are getting for the price we are paying. If you're getting the same arena for $13 million, people in, people in the city will say, you've spent $13 million for this. So I think we have to come together and see what we are spending on and what we are getting at value for the money. And Mr. CEO, do we have to do that before you go for RFP or it has to be done after? Just as a council, we come together to see what we want. So you have easier time to go out and ask them what we are looking for.
Thank you. The RFP is just to engage the, the architect and the builder. And then, you know, the task then is to give them the options to, to come back and report back to council on. So the more direction you give to, to them that you can narrow down, then, you know, the less work that's there. But, you know, the intent is to bring back options back to council that we think, you know, are palatable. And then some of those tough decisions might be made at that point in time, whether you want to drop, you know, is a turf field. You know, when we look at it from staff point of view, I'll pick on the gymnasium, for example. Volleyball is the highest female participation sport in North America. Basketball is the second highest participation sport, all genders in Canada. We do not have a gym. We have one gym that can't hold a basketball game. And then I look at, okay, well, how much have I invested as a city in soccer or in baseball? You know, so those are, staff can make those recommendations. Council has to make those decisions, but we look at it kind of that way. And so you'd say, well, if I'm, I'm just going to throw random numbers out here. It's 22 million or, or 23 million, but you got a gym. What is the utilization of that? And the only thing I can guarantee is you build a gym today, when it's being built with everything else, it'll be cheaper than adding on. Because, you know, you have those other things. But I think council needs that information. They need to say, okay, the gym will cost you an extra million today. If you make the decision not to, that's fine. You might say, well, gym for a million or turf field for 5 million. You might say, ooh, I don't know if I want the $5 million turf field. I'd rather take the. But none of us as staff can tell you those numbers today. And that's why we want to go through that process. Because those are the tough decisions that I think you, the council will make.
Thank you. And I do agree with you. There is no volleyball facility in our city because I do go to Lhasa tournaments. They all held at the Summer Game Park. They're all held there. So I think, yeah, very, what you're saying is right and we all have to come to consensus what we want to do together. The number is, nobody agrees with the number. I think everybody around here, nobody wants to pay $60 million. So I think that's established. We don't want to spend $60 million. So that's established today.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Nuisteg.
Just one quick question of funding sources. If we do this NHL so that arenas, so that we can attract games and tourism, can this be something that MAT tax is used for?
Potentially. And what I would look to do is I would fund MAT tax revenue through it, through rental rates that would come back to the city. And then that way, that offsets the debt charge revenue that's there. So you increase the operational. You can prove to the hotels that you actually brought teams to it, which satisfies the tourism thing and it rounds out the revenue. So I would say yes, and I would structure it that way.
So right off the top, are you saying we can fund it right off the top or as time goes on?
I think, I think we'd.
And operating?
Yeah, I think we'd put an estimate through and what is the potential for MAT revenue to flow through to the program.
So it wouldn't be in the capital cost. It would be through more operational.
That's correct. But it would, it would be what servicing the debt at that point in time, which impacts the tax levy impact to, to the taxpayer for the debt servicing. The other thing too is, just so council knows, we just closed on the RFP for the review of sponsorship for a professional come in to assess what the value of that arena is, plus the exchange. And, you know, what we could realistically potentially raise for naming rights and sponsorship rights. And that hasn't been factored in. And that would be another funding source to reduce the, to reduce the cost of the, you know, of the facility.
So we can't use DCs, but we can use MAT and sponsorship.
We, we can use DCs for parts of the project, just not for the ice rink itself.
Okay, so partial DCs, MAT tax, sponsorship and the $10 million government grant.
That's correct.
Any other areas of?
The money tree.
Well, I, I think, you know, I think it's the rev, so like, if I look at, if I, it's how much revenue can you generate in that facility? And, you know, and what, what can be the utilization? And that's where some of the synergies, you know, you have to be careful, you know, that you don't break some good synergies. So, you know, a prime example is we might run ice there in the summertime. Why? Because I think that facility, where it's located and with all the other assets around it, guys who run hockey camps, or we may choose to run our own hockey camps or may choose to run some of our own program. If you think about it, it, it is a perfect site for that. You can put the kids on the ice twice for two, one hour and a half sessions. Then they can go to the field, the turf field or, you know, the outdoor field for dry land training. And you can really have a unique, you know, a, a unique facility there for those types of purposes. You know, having a better community room or a gymnasium for when you're hosting major tournaments, because that's our major, one of our major tournament items. Like currently there, you know, we don't really have that, that great of a facility there for it. So, and when I look at the McBain Center, you know, it is our busiest building by far. It, you know, if I compare and I walk all our facilities at all different times, but if I go Tuesday at 10:00 AM to the Gale Center versus a Tuesday, 10:00 AM at McBain, the utilization is much different. Why? Because you have cross dependency. And I always say, if you can get a, you know, a, you know, if you can get a building that's busy from 9:00 till 9:00, it's a far more efficient operation. And what happens when you have a community center, in the mornings, you may have, you know, early childhood education, moms with tots and that kind of stuff, because they have to have activities for that. You also have seniors who may not be working. So your building's busy during the day. You're making revenue off of that. And then you're, you know, then you switch over to four, five o'clock, you have then the teams and then late at night, you have the adults in there playing. But if you have a facility that doesn't have some of those cross dependencies, you might not be able to fill up that room. But I still have to have staff there, you know.
So your fixed costs are there.
Yeah. The worst thing I see at the Gale Center, and Rob knows this, is when I walk in and there's one rink rented. Because whether I got one ring, two rings, three or four rings rented, my cost is, is the same.
Fixed costs, yeah.
And so when you start pulling out pieces of a combined product, you may actually hurt your business case and your long-term viability of it. And that's the kindest information we need to bring back to council that we got to take a look at.
So we will be receiving that. So we'll be receiving what it will cost. Then we're going to be looking, seeing what funding dollars we can receive as well as the operate, how much revenue we can generate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor wanted you to know all those beeps were for you. I have Counselor Baldinelli. I have Counsel Baldinelli.
Now, you're just getting on, thank you, through, sir. Mayor Jim wanted to make sure about the NHL-style rink. So during my homework, I found that it could be extended, correct? 15 feet is all the extension out to be through the back end, and then you would have, the width is perfectly clear, so it's not an Olympic-sized rink, only in Europe over here, maybe Thorold, I think, might be Olympic, be the only one around. But that'd be a cost savings as well, right? Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the amendment? Oh, Counsel Keria. That's okay.
One more question. How do how do we, I wanted to be last once. I lost the competition every other meeting, but how do we pay, how do we pay colliers? Is colliers a fixed fee? Does it have anything, do they get paid any anything based on the spend? Just the question was asked.
Yeah, it's a fixed fee. There's, and just to be clear also, even with the RFP that we're coming on, we have what's called off-ramps and multiple off-ramps that we can offload or unload or stop the process, right? So, and, you know, colliers is, you know, is a fixed fee, hourly-based type of contract. So, you know, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to build something, and, you know, whether we build 60 million or 20 million, the RFPs are the same, the legal documents are the same, all that stuff is kind of the same. And but with the other one, with the design-build team, we do have multiple, and that's how we're designing it with colliers and legal, is that if council says no at one point in time, the the contract is easily ended, we're not exposed. If council makes a change, again, it's easily ended.
Are there any other questions of staff or any other comments? Okay, if not, then the amendment that's on the floor, made by Counsel Strange, seconded by Counsel Baldinelli, is to approve the $4 million in the capital budget as a placeholder and then have staff report back before any of the money goes out the door. If everyone understands the motion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that's.
And Counsel Dubrowski in favor as well.
Thank you, Counsel Dubrowski.
Thank you.
Can I have one quick comment?
Sure.
One quick, you can even start the clock. I'll like, a quickie. This is, this is a great, this is a great debate, and I appreciate counsel's debate on this, and staff will work real hard. And when I say, you know, every night's budget night, I'm just going to remind council that the Gale Center, whenever it comes up, today, if I were to replace it, it's $120 million. So when we talk about raising fees or we talk about reserves, if I put away $100,000 a year 50 years ago, each year, for Chippewa, and it doesn't sound like much, but we give away all kinds of fees all the time. But if I put away $100,000 a year and it doubled every 10 years, you know, we'd have half the budget covered. But we don't do that. And then what happens is, it comes up, and it's like, oh, my God, I got to spend 50 million or whatever. And you got a Gale Center that is, today was going to be $120 million, I can guarantee you, in 15 or 20 years, we're going to be talking about $200 million. And I got a McBain Center and the same thing. So when we talk about, and Ms. Krucen's here on asset management, and we talk about these things, you know, and this is why we need to come up with items that say, you know, listen, you got to pay an extra 10 bucks an hour every time you go on the ice, because we're going to put that in reserve, save the money, and replace it. So I just hope you remember the tension and the anxiety that you have in the room today, that when we talk about not waiving fees, or we talk about, you know, adding extra on the fees, it's so that we don't have these difficult debates going forward. Anyways, that was my 1 minute and 30-second speech.
Thanks, you didn't hit the beep this time. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to go back to Mr. Dowling, because I know you're quarterbacking the amendment, so there was a couple of them that that dealt with Chippewa, so I'm not sure whether or not that takes off the second one.
Correct, yes. So one thing I wanted to draw council's attention to, and I apologize, I didn't mention this initially, in the amendments that we're putting up on the screen, we'll have sort of a condensed version of of the amendment that is brought forward by the counselor, which we'll allow them to speak to. And we also have just a brief staff assessment, just some assumptions potentially that staff have made to help condense it down to a potential budget impact. So just wanted to bring that out. You're absolutely right. So the second amendment related to Chippewa Arena was Counsel Newsted's amendment. So I guess I will defer to Counsel Newsted if there's any further comment, or if we would like to perhaps take this off now that we've dealt with Counsel Stranges.
I think so, right. Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Then we'll proceed. The next amendment is related to the At Your Service Niagara Falls CRM Phase 2. Again, there are two different motions, pretty different counselors related to this. So Counsel LaCoco's is up first, and Counsel Patel also has an amendment related to this project. So we'll start with Counsel LaCoco's, and we'll allow her to speak to her motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The comments that I'm going to review will cover my three, the three individual motions, but specifically for this one. I know the residents are concerned about the amount that we're spending and the increased spending. We've heard today, and we've heard numerous times, that if we decrease things within our capital budget, it doesn't decrease the levy. People understand that now. I think we're all on the same page. In these hard economic times, with new hires, permanent, temporary, and contract, it should be limited to projects that we see immediate concerns in the community. We have a lot of different projects, we've looked at different priorities. Yes, some we're we're planning for the future, and sometimes there's ones that affect more immediate concerns. I put forward these amendments for the new hires. I had conversations with Ms. Clark regarding this. The way we broke it down was, we looked at the three, the three positions, sorry, the three projects. The three projects are specific pages within the budget, but the 15, the 15 positions are over a number of different, a number of different projects. So for example, there's 15 on there, and my three amendments will take out 11 of them. So the three amendments that I put forward on staff salary alone with benefits was $2,144,515. But when you looked at the whole thing with the staff and the project, they were 3 million and, 3,920. My suggestion was to not remove them from the budget, my suggestion was to spend them on something else that people see that are more high priority. And some of the, some of the suggestions are mill and pave, road rehabilitation, rural surface treatment, sidewalk replacement, urban surface treatment, asphalt overlay, water sewer, or even the deferred projects. I can leave that up to staff to do. When I look at, for 2025, we had 27 new hires. 2024, I can't confirm it, because it didn't come up quick enough, but I, if I remember correctly, it was around 20. That's a lot of new hires, and people are really struggling. And when they see us hire more, hire more, sure, they're new projects, and maybe we need them, and maybe we don't, maybe we can push them off, but that's why I put those three amendments forward. And this first one is for At Your Service. And I know specifically with this one is, it's about the AI chatbot. We have, since our new CAO has come here, we have really moved our service levels. We've moved, we're not so antiquated. We've done a lot of good things since our new CAO has been here. Do we need to be at 100 tomorrow? Probably not. Maybe we're at 75 right now, and that's great. We don't have to hit the biggest, the brightest, the most current. We're doing well now. Let's keep what we have, the Phase 1, work it out, see how it's working, and then look to towards adding those later on. So that's my amendment for this At Your Service Niagara Falls one, and pretty much the same comments for the other two.
Okay. Let me see if I have a secondar to your amendment, and if I do, then we can open up discussion. So I'll open it up to the floor. Is there a secondar to Counsel LaCoco's amendment? Are you seconding it? Okay, sounds good. Did you want to speak to it as well?
I'll start.
Okay, sounds good.
So when staff developed, you know, I'm kind of proud of staff on this, because we developed a integrated project delivery plan with multiple projects, and as as the counselor noted, it does impact a number of projects. And the reason we layered that is, if you bring in one project at a time, you know, you have to put people on the project, and then you have to backfill them. So what we were trying to do is bring in backfills that would then, you know, fulfill multiple projects at the same time. So I can bring in one backfill person, so if I need to put a finance person off on a project for 60% of the time, I can't bring in a 60% backfill, you know? But if I put two projects in, where I need a 60 and a 40%, that's a one whole person. I can bring that person in, and I get two projects, you know, off the ground, moving forward. So, you know, the challenge is, if you pull some of those projects back, you're, you know, you will end up having some of those individual projects cost a bit more, because you're inefficiently delivering those projects. And that's the intent of kind of the integrative project design. With regards to the the chatbot and some of that stuff, the, and Ms. Darlington will will present more information on it, but I look at it two things. If you get that large language model working well, and you get that, you know, you get the processes and policies in place, and that will take a bit of time, you can essentially have very effective 24-hour service for it, and we're not actually paying people on it. They can, 2:00 in the morning, you can call, you can get an answer from the chatbot, or schedule a call with someone in in the future, and you can get some efficiencies. Or with high peak volumes, instead of adding more staff, we can, you know, for peak volume, you can transfer over. So there, you know, there are some advantages to it. The challenge with any of these models is, it's not plug-and-play, you have to take the time to integrate those things. So even if you bring something on today, you know, by the time it's actually effective, you're a year down the road or more than that. So that's the other thing I'll say. So when you approve a budget today, you won't see that benefit for maybe two years' time, and the, you know, and things are a little bit different. But I'm going to, for more detail on the specific project or the IT overlay aspect, I'll let Ms. Darlington respond.
Okay, Ms. Darlington.
Thank you through the chair and for the opportunity to speak to this particular item. And I think what I will do first is talk about how we selected certain projects from an IT lens. We obviously went through the prioritization matrix that we did, but we also took a holistic look at where are we at certain stages of technology implementation, and really planned thoughtful processes to make sure that we were completing one area before initiating new areas. And At Your Service is a perfect example of that philosophy. We've launched Phase 1. As you know, we're about 50 services for the city launched in At Your Service. There's still considerable work to do with Phase 2 and onboarding the rest of the services. We have a large operational delivery on a day-to-day basis. We actually offer 130 hours of service with At Your Service in two locations. Again, remember, Monday to Friday at City Hall, 8:30 to 4:30, the McBain Center, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday to Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, 7 till 5:00 PM. So the team that is working through Phase 1 and launched right now are really working on those operational day-to-day items that we've onboarded. And what we're seeing, and I, and we're just four weeks into At Your Service, but there is a number of services that are not onboarded yet, and that's really what Phase 2 does. It integrates some of the software, so it makes it more seamless for both staff and the customer, and then it expands that service scope. Generally, once a week, I take time with our manager and supervisor team to listen to some of the call handling that we've done in the past week. And I'll give you a perfect example. Monday evening, we listened to a call, excellent call service that the agent provided. Unfortunately, that service wasn't onboarded with At Your Service. So we talked to the customer for four minutes. We paused, because that area has not been integrated into At Your Service. We reached out to the operating department, and you can see through the call log, it's bouncing to four extensions, takes over three minutes. We find out that that person's not here that day, and you need to speak to another individual, get back on the call, and we indicate, I'm sorry, that person's not here today, you need to speak to this individual, and we need to transfer over to that individual. Unfortunately, they're not there, and so the customer has to leave a message. We want to stop that. And bringing on those other services in Phase 2 will help us do that. This was a very simple inquiry that we could have resolved in less than two minutes. The total call time was 12 minutes. We want to make it efficient for the customer, deliver the service that they're expecting when they want that service, and be efficient. It frees up our staff time to work us on, focus on those higher-level, complex issues we want to help our residents, businesses, and visitors with.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Darlington. I have Counsel Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Counsel LaCoco that, you know, affordability is the forefront of everything we do, because as as we see now, our country's economy is not growing the way it's supposed to. And when Bank of Canada's governor comes out and says that our economies in downward turns, we have to be careful where we spend, and that is the reason, I know, OLG money, every dollar is a taxpayer dollar, so we have to spend everything carefully. That's why I have ICE proposed this amendment. So I want to ask Ms. Darlington, is it doable to have AI implemented after the second phase of CRM?
Thank you through the chair, and thank you for the questions. And we've had this discussion, but I'd like to share the information with all of council. So yes, if it's council's will to defer the AI portion of the project, we can certainly remove that and defer it to a future year. A couple of key things that council should note, though, there could be some increased cost impacts, and certainly some delays in those service experiences and those improvements. We had bundled it together, because we were hoping to save money on implementation, doing both at the same time, and also integration costs. Now, those costs will not be substantiated until we complete the procurement process, but that was the reason of aligning those two key components into one project overall.
Thank you. While there's amendments on on the floor, I would speak to that, that the main reason for me to defer the AI was, we do not have any KPIs or any datas or any hard evidence how the CRM in Phase 1 and 2 is working. That is the one reason for my deferral. So that is what I want to ask Ms. Darlington. Does that help to help that data to see if we need to go ahead and do the AI in the future where?
Through the chair, if I may, I think antidoteedly, we're already seeing how we can leverage AI to have those quick responses and have staff focus on the more complex issues. We do, I want to be clear, we do have KPIs, we do have reporting, we're doing that analysis, the call volume that's coming in, the email inquiries, and certainly the data from our portal as well. We're tracking those numbers. So I think we're there would be my best answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments on this issue? Counsel LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to speak to what Mr. Burgess said about 60% here and 40% here for one person. When I spoke with Ms. Clark, we looked at a two-year contract, and the way we broke it down was, 25% of a six-month contract was going to this project, 25% was going to this project. So a two-year contract was four separate projects, and that's that 60-40, but pretty much, and you couldn't just cut off part of it and then end up with a half of a person, and I understood that. So when we broke it all down, we broke it on with specific projects per the budget book to the list of positions, so it was easy to break down that way. Again, I want to go back to the hiring, and I really appreciate all of the work that the staff has done in changing everything for At Your Service. If we're only four weeks in, I really feel that we should, as Counsel Patel said, get some KPIs. I know they're doing KPIs, but it's only been four weeks. Let's see how it's working, defer this, put this on hold for now, and residents want to see value for their money. If we can show them that more roads are getting done, more snow plowing is getting done, because we purchased a new piece of equipment, whatever the case is, they will see that more. And if the tax bill goes up, which it probably will, then they will at least see some of the services. All of these services are great, but do we need the best, the brightest, the most newest right now, when everybody's struggling? So that's why I put that on on the table, and we'll go from there. So that's why I put that on, on the table and we'll go from there.
Okay, are there any other comments on this issue? Mayor DiOdati. Did you have your hand up?
I, I did. You must not have seen me, uh, Chair, thank you. Uh, I'm...
Got that invisibility cloak on.
I, I think so. So I, I'm not going to support the, um, I'm not going to support the amendment. I think you have one chance at a first impression, period. We've been working so hard at customer service for our residents and you want to know front-facing service? There's nothing more front-facing than when they phone and email the city. More than a certain road they're going to go down, more than a certain specific facility they're going to attend. Walking, uh, I'm sorry, phoning and emailing the city is how we deal with everything. You just heard from our, um, our staff here that, from our general manager, that this is for a more efficient and integrated implementation. All residents use customer service. When you have a pothole, barking dog, you've got tall grass, whatever your issue is, this is how they contact us. And you're saying, let's hold off implementing it because it might affect taxes. It doesn't affect the taxes. We've already made this clear. None of this from capital is being transferred to reserve, or to, uh, operating. It's not affecting. So we have a chance to deliver great customer service and we're saying, we don't want to do that. You want value for the money? Nothing gives better value than customer service to the residents in an efficient way. So for, as far as my money's concerned, I think by burying customer service and kicking the can down the road, you're giving less customer service, you're losing value. So I wouldn't support this. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any other comments then before I call the vote? If not, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed?
Counselor Dubrowski's opposed.
Thank you, Counselor Dubrowski. Okay, so the motion's lost, so, uh, James, you can quarterback us over to the next one.
Of course. So through the chair, related to the same project is, um, Counselor Patel's amendment, um, speaking specifically to the AI piece, if you'd like to introduce that.
Counselor Patel, would you like to introduce your motion for the second time?
Yes, my motion is to go on with the Phase Two implementation, but wait for AI because I still say we still need more data, more KPIs and more, uh, some of the business case to see why we need to go ahead because I am saying that, I'm not saying cancel it, I just said let's do Phase Three so we have more information. And CRM is going perfectly fine at your service and adding AI later on, I think that's a, I think that's a great work, great, great way of phasing something in and also, uh, saves us hundred eighty thousand dollars in annual licensing fee. So that's immediate impact on operating. So that is the reason for my to, me to phase out the Phase Three as a AI implementation.
Okay, and before I listen to comments, I'll ask, is there a secondar to this motion? Counselor Carrio?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion because I do have a vote with counsel. I'm going to support the motion. Not that I'm going to vote in favor or against it, but I think it's only fair that the counselors went to the effort of putting these to us tonight. I think it's worth us hearing them all and have, I, I want to hear staff's opinion on them. So if I don't, if we don't, if we have a motion that's not seconded, we don't get to hear from staff. And I'd like to get all the information before I make my vote. So I'd like to hear from staff and if the only way I can hear from staff is by seconding a motion whether I like it or not, I'm going to make, I'm going to second the motion.
Okay, so a motion by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Carrio, and I'm going to go to Ms. Darlington again because I know that you did mention the AI component of this in your answer last time. So if you just want to reiterate to council because that's what this motion is focused on.
Sure, thank you very much through the chair. Um, as I mentioned, uh, while deferring, um, is possible if that's the will of council. It could increase costs and it certainly delays the benefits. And just so council understands the benefit of the customer service AI, um, by enabling the AI agent to handle routine inquiries quickly and accurately, it will improve the customer experience, less wait time, they can have the service when they want at any time that they want it. It supports staff efficiency by reducing repetitive or simple tasks and it frees up their time to work on those complex issues. It aligns with our new digital infrastructure with the new website launching in January and our CRM knowledge base in place. The city is well positioned to introduce the AI deployment. And finally, um, this customer service AI chatbot was identified in the strategic plan as a key step towards modernizing service delivery. Uh, it ensures Niagara Falls stays focused on citizen-centered service delivery, leveraging technology for long-term efficiency and really supporting the customer how they want to be supported.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Darlington. Are there any questions or comments by members of council? So the last amendment was to defer the entire project. This amendment is simply just to defer the AI motion. We all understand the motion. If so, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And the motion's lost. Okay, Mr. Darlington, where do we go next?
So that ends the section where we had multiple amendments related to the same project. From this point forward, we've grouped the amendments, um, by council in alphabetical order. So, um, as Counselor Loco mentioned earlier, I realize some of hers were related. Now, the remainder of her two amendments, um, will be sequential from this point forward and, um, I'll let her speak to, to the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This work in assessment management, WAM, um, when I went through the list of positions with Ms. Clark, this one, one, two, three, four, five, six, has six different, um, dollar figures for positions, six different pieces of positions, and they total one million four hundred and thirty-five thousand eight oh five. And again, I will say about the hiring, um, people do not want to see us hiring, they are struggling. If we keep on increasing our expenses every single year, we start at a base, we add a percentage, it's always going to go up. We need to curtail our spending and if we are going to spend, we need to spend on things that people will see and appreciate and feel that they're getting value for their money. Not that the other things aren't value, but I'm just trying to prioritize based on the conversations that I have. So all of my other comments are for this one as well.
Okay, uh, thanks. And before I let staff comment, I'm just going to see whether or not there's a secondar to the motion. So I have a secondar by Counselor Newsted. So I'd ask Mr. Nichol, if you want to just weigh in on the amendment and how it would affect us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's actually a really important way to explain this is this is the, the continuation of that customer complaint into our work order system. So this, the system we have today is antiquated, it's an on-premise system, uh, that's, um, the support is going to be discontinued, uh, in terms of future upgrades. Um, we've identified that it, uh, it definitely needs a reboot. It needs to have staff resources assigned to help us, um, to develop the functional specifications, to, to identify the improvements to the business workflows, uh, and to clean up the data. It's all based on data. This is a system that bolts on top of our data and it really allows us to take those service requests and action them into real work and to be able to record that work and, and run reports on it to develop the KPIs that council wants. I feel like this is a missing link right now. We, we've made advancements in work order manage, uh, sorry, in customer service. We want to make advancements in reporting and efficiencies to help us drive those better decision-making and the tool we have today isn't cutting it. So this is the first and most important step in moving that project forward. Without moving this project forward in the budget, um, I would suggest it'll be a top priority for 2027 and we're only delaying the inevitable that we have to get moving forward on this project.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, and I hate bringing up, uh, bad laundry from the past, but the reason we do projects now where we allocate staff to it is because the prior version of this program was rolled out, or what we call off the corner of someone's desk, without dedicated staff. And what I would, if you went and looked at the value for money on that rollout, uh, we ended up with a program that took too long to roll out, uh, did not meet the needs and was ineffective. And so it's, uh, I always say there's a difference between price and value, never confuse the two. Uh, and, and putting that up front to get the right people to make the right decisions on that software going forward is important. This also feeds into the asset management, uh, aspect that's very important to, uh, council in making decisions. Uh, that's why we have one of our staff sitting in the third row. Um, and, uh, um, and it's a tool that we need to move forward with for, um, asset management, uh, 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 also along with the work order system. Um, and I'm going to just tell a quick story. I did a ride-along, uh, just so council understands this. Um, I did a ride-along for the pothole crew and, um, the funny story was they had a list of potholes and I said, oh, isn't it pre-programmed into the GPS? They, they literally turned around and laughed at me and they said, uh, two weeks ago, we were using the book. And they said, and they, I go, what are you talking about? The book? And they go, and then the guy goes, show them the book. And it was handwritten job orders. That is, like, we're a hundred million dollar organization. What should happen is there's a work order that goes in, here's fifty work orders, the computer then says, here's the, your route optimization and assigns it to the crew. It shouldn't be some guys trying to figure out, okay, well, this street's close to this street, this closes, and this is a bigger job. That is, like, I was fabricating, you know, so if you want to talk efficiency, if you want to talk how things should run, we were literally weeks ago doing a manual, write a list on a book. Um, so that's, you know, I just want to give that quick story because that's when we talk efficiency, when we talk value for money, if I can fill more potholes, uh, in the same amount of hours, um, that's the, that's the efficiency for the taxpayer.
Okay, I have Counselor Carrio and Counselor Patel.
I was just going to say, I like the way it was in the past. We get a call, we call Mr. Nichols, he fixes it, it's all over.
Still going by Nichols? Okay. Counselor Patel, please.
Uh, I have, uh, two questions, one for Ms. Darlington and one for Mr. Nichol. Actually, it's not a question. Mr. Nichol, actually, you know, Mrs. CEO's food analogy is contagious and Mr. Nichol gave us a good example yesterday with the pizza, so I would like him to repeat that example. Pizza toppings, how you order a pizza.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, thanks through the chair. One of the sayings that Ms. Gudgeon taught me, um, with respect to, uh, to this is, we want to make, we want to give our staff tools that are no more difficult than ordering a pizza online. We've all done it before. We have our favorite pizza shop. Six or seven buttons punch in your credit card, it's in the system. It needs to be simple. Our workers need to spend more time on shovels, doing the work, assessing the work, um, not punching things into system or writing them down in paper. So that's our goal at the end of the day is to be efficient and to be clear. We also want to be able to have the public submit that information to us in, in a manner that's just as easy as ordering a pizza.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments by members?
I still have one more question from Ms. Darlington.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Darlington, since this is under your department. I know a while ago, asset management plan was mandated by province, so is there something falls under the same scope?
Uh, through the chair, if I can, I look at this project, the work in asset management program is one of our core pieces of software that we need to, uh, enhance and plan for. So this is a core piece. The asset management program that Tara leads and Eric leads, this is a, a key tool in navigating that. It will allow us to integrate our assets, manage our assets, and, and a key thing Mr. Nichol already said tonight was it's the work order piece. And now we can track all of that in a seamless system that's integrated with other systems. So it is core and it certainly supports our asset management plan.
Thank you. And one more question I had, I asked you yesterday about the secondary position or segment position, you explained to me how they get trained. Would you please, uh, explain that to council for this discussion yesterday?
Uh, through the chair, if I, if I may, what we talked about is the strategy that Mr. Burgess talked about earlier tonight. We have historically at the city completed projects at the side of our desk. We have now implemented a very detailed, integrated project management piece where we take our, uh, permanent staff members and we bring them over to a project and we backfill the operational need. So the contract staff member comes and learns about the operational need and our permanent staff go over to the project. They gain all that knowledge, all that learning, so when the project is complete, they go back to their home position. We say thank you to our contract position for helping us out during this period of time and that permanent staff member has all of that knowledge gained on the project. And then they can help sustain the, the program as we move forward. And that's been a really key change in how we're looking at IT projects moving forward for the city.
Okay, I have Mayor DiOdati.
Thank you for recognizing me, Chair. Yeah, and I want to definitely follow on with this digital direction that we're going. I mean, the old school was nice, but I can't touch the new. I mean, look now when you travel, use your ways so you know about accidents, you know if there's police officers, you know if there's construction. Skip the dishes when you want to use examples, and I will be much briefer than our CIO. Uh, Uber, you know, even UPS, I just quickly Googled, uh, because I use digital to Google, uh, they'll do, the driver will do between one and two hundred deliveries per day for a truck. And that's because they use GPS and they use digital, uh, notification. So I just think that, uh, this is the smart way to go to make us more efficient, give the residents more bang for their buck. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any other comments before I call the vote? Counselor Baldinelli.
Uh, did you have a specific application that you're looking to purchase?
Uh, thank you, uh, through the chair. We're currently, uh, in collaboration with Mr. Nichol and the IT department, working on a scope and a review. Um, we're currently looking at a couple different software applications and that report should be coming forward, uh, to staff in the beginning of December. So it's, it's imminent.
Do you know the two that you were looking at? And what the cost would be year over, year after year?
Through the chair, I'm not at liberty to say at the present moment.
Thanks for that answer.
Are there any other questions then before I call the vote? Okay, seeing none, if everyone understands the motion, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Sorry, all those in favor? In favor of deferred, right? I mean, this, uh, this is to defer the work and asset management system replacement for Phase One. That's what it would do. So I'll call the vote again. All those in favor? And opposed? So the motion is lost. Uh, Counselor Dubrowski, were you in favor? No, he's opposed. He's opposed. He's opposed. Mr. Darlington, where do we go next?
Thank you, Chair. Um, this is Counselor Loco's third amendment and I'll let her speak to it as well.
Thank you. All of the things I said before, um, same for this. This project planning and building AI is one, two, three, four separate positions, uh, or portions of positions totaling five hundred and eleven, seven fifty, and everything else I spoke to for this as well.
Okay, I'm going to have, um, actually, I'm going to ask for a secondar first. I have a secondar by Counselor Patel and then I'll ask Mr. Burgess to speak to this.
I'm going to start and, um, Kira will, uh, follow up. This one's slightly different. I want to give a bit of additional background to council. So in the building department, uh, the building department is a very difficult department to recruit for. Uh, every city is struggling, uh, in recruitment. So there is a talent crisis in obtaining building inspectors. Uh, so as a regional group, uh, there's other issues to, as all, all the municipalities in the region were looking at ways to improve, uh, the building site of, of functions. There's also other issues that the developers say it's inconsistent. I build a, uh, house in St. Catherine's, it's different, there's different rules in Niagara Falls. Why is, there's only one building code. Why is, there's this? So we put a challenge out to say, okay, how do we address the human resource needs? How do we address inconsistency? One of the things that came up was using AI. A third problem that's there is we are getting poor quality submissions from developers, which means longer throughput times. So before someone would give you the, the plans, there might be fifteen deficiencies and a one-page report to correct the deficiencies. Now you might be into two or three pages and it goes back and forth, back and forth, which means my building inspectors who I have fewer of, and in the case of the city Niagara Falls, not to speak, um, you know, we have a lot of senior building inspectors who could walk out and retire at any given point in time. So I need to cover off these risks. So what the AI does is you can submit a, um, uh, the, the builder can submit it, uh, within ten seconds it come back says, here's all your deficiencies. The building inspector doesn't need to address it at that point in time, they can correct. And then when the building inspector is actually involved, uh, it's a much cleaner document, so they're not wasting time on stuff that the, the builder should have already dealt with. Um, so that is some of the, um, key background. The other big thing that everyone talks about is speed from the developer side and this will have some speed. Part of the cost recovery of this is we will charge more for the developers, so they will be paying, uh, for the service. The other quick comments I will, I will make is that we are going joint with St. Catherine's on this. Uh, and though we put a million dollar budget in there, that was one of the bidder's, um, prices. Uh, but... Uh, but we think that there are, uh, we think we can get a cheaper, uh, thing up there. But we had to put a budget amount in, we wanted to be a bit more assertive on that. Uh, but we're gonna work with the City of St. Catherine's. We are not cutting edge on this at all. Uh, frankly, Burlington and other communities have moved to this. So we are not, uh, you know, way in front of the pack. We're kind of in the middle of the pack on this one and we have a, a pretty pressing need, uh, on that. So I'm just gonna, those are kind of the business issues that you might not think about when you look at a software program, human resource issues and that kind of stuff and inconsistency. But that, some of them, major pressing items, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Dolch.
Okay, Ms. Dolch.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, through you to the Counselors. So, um, I know Jason said a lot there, so I, I won't belabor the point. But I do want to say that, um, I don't know, Mr. Dowling, if you can kind of show the software, just the brief, brief images. Um, what the, what the, the software does is does both the zoning check and the building review check. And I want to give you an example. So, um, this software, so a seventeen-page document for a building submission, seventeen pages that the building reviewer has to go through to review each section that. The EI does it in fifty-nine seconds. So fifty-nine seconds to get through a second, seventeen-page document that will be sent back to, to the, to the, just on the first submission. Obviously, we still have eyes on it. We're not, we're not getting rid of resources, things like that. But what it does do, you can see here on the zoning review, it'll check all the things that you're deficient. You'll see the deficiency, it'll go right back to you. Um, so within seconds, you'll get that one back. Uh, if you go to the next one, building review, similar thing. It's gonna tell you where you're deficient and red. And it's very simple for residents, um, you know, if they're putting an addition on the house, they want to submit it. All they have to submit is a PDF drawing. And they'll get the check and say, you know what, you're deficient in this, 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 you need to, you need to look at these things. So we'll get that back quickly, like I said. And what that does for staff, as Jason said, we don't have a lot of, you know, we're, we're trying to get staff and attract staff and do all these things. But what it does when we do have full staff complement, it lets us move to other projects. We're trying to do the fast, the streamline, the faster permitting. We've already done sheds and decks, but we, we don't have enough staffing resources to go to residential permitting for fast-tracking. We don't have enough staff to go to commercial fast-tracking or industrial fast-tracking. But if we can get something like this, we may be able to do that once this is really up and running. So, um, it is a very good software system. And, and as Jason said, we, we had another demo today, so, uh, and we have one tomorrow. So we are looking for efficiencies. But I do think that this is, um, something, um, that not only helps developers, but also the general homeowner who's looking for some guidance and just to submit, uh, a plan.
Yeah, I think nothing frustrates people more than having to come to the counter and then be sent away and have to do four things and then come back and have to do three more things and then come back and have to do more. So I, I, I think this one will hit a home run. I have Counselor Carrio and Counselor Baldinelli that wish to speak.
Well, having been one of the ones that have been sent away many times, if this could help us get done quicker.
And people will pay for it, they will.
Uh, they, everyone will pay. Just to save the back and forth, if this is gonna be submitted by computer, done and sent back in a timely fashion, I think it'd be welcome. But my question would be, have we talked to any of the municipalities, uh, who, who had this? And make sure that we're not just getting into another bunch of issues?
Through the Chair to the Counselor. So, um, depending on the software we, we choose, obviously, but the ones that have implemented a certain software program, Burlington, for example, we have talked to them. They've, they've come to the CEO's table to discuss the software and their experience and how it's working. Uh, so it is live and ready to go. And Vancouver has it, Markham has it, there's a number of places that have it now. Yeah, no, again, I don't know if we're gonna go as far as no human touch. Um, because again, you want to still make sure, uh, eyes are on it until we feel confident, right? But again, you can get to that point once you feel confident in the AI software for sure.
I'm just hoping that the developers and the builders will be as happy as we will be. That's, that would be the goal.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Baldinelli.
Uh, just on that point, thank you, uh, for that explanation. Good questions. So when it, let's say I was submitting a drawing. Would that cost me money the first time if I had three deficiencies? Is it every time I send, cost? Or is it when I finally?
Yes, so, uh, through the Chair to the Counselor. So the software, the way it works is every time we do a check, it costs additional money. Um, you know, the way we've kind of structured it in, in this is that we're not getting full cost recovery for the check ourselves from the developer on the first check. After that, they would be charged an individual fee for every check. What we're hoping is the first check kind of gets them set to say, you know what, you have seventeen deficiencies. Fix the deficiencies, resubmit. We do a quick check based on the original deficiencies and it's out the door. Right? So, so that they're not paying for multiple checks. They can if they choose to. Uh, but, you know, ultimately, I think we would just do, uh, the first check. Because again, it does cost each time you do a check. It does through, do another review.
Does it cost by, by the second?
No, yeah, right.
I don't know. I mean, it depends if I have a large drawing, it takes, you know, minutes.
No, it, it's based on, on dwelling unit or, or commercial.
Oh, so depending on the size of the drawing or whatever, it's all appropriate.
Yes.
It would know that.
Yeah, so it's per application. So commercial, if it's a commercial build or industrial build, it's one cost. If it's an apartment building, it's per unit in the apartment building. Again, um, each different software company does it a bit different, but just as an example.
And that, and that information for each city and the zoning policies and stuff are on cloud?
Yeah.
Is it cloud-based?
Yeah, it's all cloud. And, and again, it's, it's managed by them, uh, the AI software, but it's cloud-based, yeah.
So is this initial software process, you're gonna be working with St. Catherine's on the software? And then what are the year-to-year costs on that?
Uh, yeah, so the, uh, the, we, we intend to go to market with St. Catherine's. And then that way we can learn together at the same point in time. The annual costs are based upon an estimate of the, uh, permits that are put through or the applications that are put through. Um, and there's different price breaks. So if you do so many, uh, permits, it's so much per permit, if you go over amount, there, there's a reduced cost to that. So, and each company is different in pricing. That's why we're trying to, we're moving through a bunch of different demos too. So before we make a final selection, we, we will come back to, to Counsel, uh, on that to say, here was our final selection and, and kind of go from there.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Chair, sorry, I'm going to remove that motion. I'm gonna take it off the floor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Mr. Dowling, our next one, please?
Yeah, proceeding down the list alphabetically, Counselor Newesteg's are next. Perhaps we could, um...
Let's jump to the next one and then we'll come back.
Perfect. She had a few here, so we'll continue on and perhaps go over to Counselor Patel to introduce her second amendment.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, my motion, uh, my amendment is for the parking lot four improvement on page two twenty-five. My suggestion is to wait till, wait till we do the reconstruction or updates on Ellen Avenue for the parking lot. That was my suggestion. So I would like to hear from staff what they have to say about that.
Okay, let me see if I have a secondar. A secondar by Counselor LaCoco and then I'll go over to Mr. Nichols. On purpose, yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Chairs. The, um, motion by, uh, the Counselor is to defer the parking lot work, um, until Ellen Avenue is reconstructed, which also begs a few questions about when is, or sorry, when is Ellen Avenue being reconstructed? In the budget package today, we have a two hundred thousand dollar contribution to do a design of Ellen and Center Street. And, which is also a subject of a future amendment, so there's some interrelationships here. Nonetheless, um, staff's initial plan in consultation with the Victoria Centre BIA, who have some, um, contributions to the project, was to advance the design for Ellen and Center and then to move forward with Center Street reconstruction as phase one and Ellen Avenue reconstruction as phase two and to include some of the rework of Ellen Avenue in that phase two construction. That was the initial scope. However, based on some motions of, of the Counsel previously to start accelerating the efficiency of our parking lots, we've elected to propose an advancement of parking lot four, which is the Ellen Avenue lot, to, uh, create an additional ten spaces. The parking lot has some asset management needs today. The, the surface of the parking lot is in need of repair. It's been excavated and repaved by utilities a number of times. Um, we know that the parking lot has some unknown utilities like street lighting and hydro in there. So there's some contingencies built into our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget to account for those things. Um, the two hundred and fifty thousand is definitely an upset limit. We likely can come in under. Um, but the intent of the project is essentially to create ten additional spaces by removing the angled parking that's there today and removing the bumpouts that, um, really are, are unused and unprofitable space. Some really rough numbers we calculated were an estimate of about thirty-two hundred dollars per year per space gross revenue. So even at a reduction in, you know, like, the cost to maintain that parking lot at, let's say, twenty-five hundred dollars per space with ten new spaces, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment has a ten-year return on investment. So the sooner we can do these improvements, the sooner we can start generating revenue in that parking lot and so on and so forth. If we can come in even cheaper, that ROI becomes, uh, a lot shorter. Um, so Counselor, the, the concern I have with any deferral is that the Center and Ellen Street project may not be two years away. It may be three or four years away, um, which has been our experience with completion of the Victoria Centre Streetscape Master Plan, where we completed, uh, Ferry Street, uh, Victoria First and Ferry Street was just done last year. The original intention was to have all of that done by this time. So we know that with our competing priorities, those, those projects extend a little bit further. And that's why we felt there would be some merit to, uh, accelerating the parking lot re, um, rework to try to take advantage of that now. And then, um, we would deal with the Ellen Avenue, uh, reconstruction at a later date.
Uh, Mr. Chair, actually, with that, that explanation, I will take my motion back.
Okay.
If we are going to, if we will have the cost reduction and we will make the money back in like, less than ten years, then, then it's worth the investment. And with the condition of the parking lot, it is gonna be needing resurfacing pretty soon anyways. So I think, um, I can agree with that and I'll take the motion, that amendment back, it's not a motion.
Okay, great, sounds good. Counselor LaCoco.
I just had a question, um, through the Chair. This two hundred and fifty thousand is for design only or it includes, um, construction? It, it's unclear.
Yeah, thank you through the Chair. To be perfectly clear, that, I, I would never recommend spending more than that. That ten-year payback is, is achievable. It's a parking lot. So it's, uh, the design can be done with our own internal staff. It's ninety percent done. This would be the cost to finish design, work with utilities to make sure we're not interfering with their, their infrastructure and to complete the removal and the resurfacing and restriping, uh, so that the, the facility can accommodate more people parked in that spot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so since we have no motion on the floor, Mr. Dowling, I go back to you. And if you want to go back to Counselor Newesteg's motions, we'll go to her first amendment.
Perfect, that's what I was going to ask, Chair. So, um, please forgive me, we're just gonna jump back up. So, um, Counselor Newesteg, so your, your first amendment was addressed earlier on, um, with respect to Chippewa Arena. Um, so your amendment number two, um, with respect... Oh, no, you're right, I'm so sorry. I lost track there, okay. The jolly cut is first, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowling. Um, my amendment is the jolly cut investigation feasibility assessment. It's as much about the, saving the hundred thousand dollars as it is about, um, liability. We have many access points down to the falls. Um, so to use one that we know has high risk, it's not a, a well-lit, um, pathway. It has some complications going down. I know in the report it said, um, there is going to be a hotel. I have yet to see a hotel come to us for this. So to be spending money like this when we have this kind of risk, I would like to see us just close it until we can, uh, until we actually need it. So, um, to incre, uh, to decrease our liability issue.
Okay, and do I have a secondar to this motion? Seconded by Counselor Strange. And I'll go over to Mr. Nichol.
Yeah, thank you. And through the Chair, and maybe if it'd be helpful to give a brief explanation of what it, the jolly cut is today and particularly for those maybe joining, the thousands of people joining us online. Just writing...
We've grown, it's tens of thousands now.
Um, the end of Robinson Street has a, a staircase. There's a two-level staircase. And at the end of the staircase is a trail. And it's in poor condition, it's a combination of asphalt, stone. Uh, and it's about seventy meters of, of city-owned land before it transitions to Niagara Parks land. That staircase and that trail are, are both city assets that we're liable for, liable to maintain in a state of good repair, liable for people who use that, uh, in safe passage. So that city asset, um, requires some level of asset management planning. It's, it, the staircase is not in terrible shape, but it's a staircase which is inaccessible for a very prominent location, uh, for pedestrians to potentially access Queen Victoria Park. The other locations are Murray Hill, Clifton Hill. There are no other midpoints. So it is a very strategic location for a connection between Niagara Parks property and city property. What staff were, were hoping to do was develop some concepts that could lead towards a budget and, uh, could ultimately lead to a, a capital budget for the city. Or an alternative is, is a potential partnership through MAT-TAX or through developer application. We did have a pre, uh, pre-consultation with a developer who want, who owns land on either side of that, um, bulb at the end of Robinson Street. The, this proposal would give us a design that we could, um, we could collaborate with adjacent business owners. And through our connectivity study that was completed two years ago, we know that some of the adjacent business owners would like to be involved in design. They don't want one developer to have exclusive rights and design concepts to make it look like it fits only with their development. They'd like to make sure that it's available and useful, useful for all. And that was also a theme that came out of our, um, our tourist connectivity study. So I would suggest to Counselor, to Counsel, you know, if this isn't moving forward, we still need to do something as a city with this, with this staircase and this trail. We sign it right now that it's, um, it's an uneven trail and it's not maintained in winter. And we tried to do our best to close it in winter. Um, but winter is different now. If we get a few days of rain, of snow and then it's clear for two or three weeks. And so people do want to, to use it for access to the lower part of the park. Um, at, at some point in time, we need to do something there. And we can close it, um, but it would be closed for four seasons. I think we would be pressured to do something with it because it is an asset and it needs an end-of-life strategy. This would develop that strategy and give us a budget that we can use and a concept that we can use to make a decision at a later date. Without this money, we don't have the resources to hire a bridge engineer to give us that type of assessment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nichol. I have Counselor Patel.
Through you Chair to Mr. Nichol. What do you mean by end of the life assessment? Like, do we have to spend money to close it?
Yeah, um, thank you. Through the Chair, what I mean by that is that the staircase, it has still some useful life in it. I mean, we're, we're, we haven't done a full structural assessment on it. But the path at the lower end, the seventy meters of path is at end of life. The asphalt's broken, the concrete's broken. We need to do something and either replace it or close it and remove it. So that's what I mean by end of life. So we need to do some type of evaluation to tell, to determine what do we do? Do we... What type of investment do we make?
Thank you. So, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So if we close it, are we liable to anybody getting hurt there? Once we put a sign that it's closed, do not enter?
Yeah, and through the Chair, um, it's a bit of a loaded question, unfortunately. We are always liable. Maybe you would tell me, um, you know, I don't know what you'd say. And that's not, I'm not here to speculate, I'm not a lawyer. I think the concern I has is if we close it, we're, now we're obligated to inspect it to ensure people are adhering to the closure provisions we make. So we could put fences, but if people scale the fence, you know, have we done enough to ensure that people are, are acting safely? In the lower part of the park where we connect to Niagara Parks, we'd likely want to remove those hazards because there aren't any good ways to, to barricade that off. We'd end up likely having to fence off a large perimeter to prevent people from accessing that, uh, part of that, that trail that's in bad shape.
Counselor Baldinelli and then Counselor Carrio.
I think you maybe answered the question I had, but where is exactly where the parks? And is like that part of the escarpment or hill, you want to call it? Why would that be ours and not the park?
Yeah, and through the Chair, I mean, we've done our best with property records to try to determine where that is. The records that we have indicate that at the, the bottom of the stairs, we own about seventy meters of that trail projecting into the, the Parks property. Yeah, we believe it was a former road allowance that would have extended. At one point in time, it was, it was a proposal to drop the road and actually create a road down to the park. So there was likely that we have historical ownership of that right of way.
Counselor Carrio.
Have you had discussions with the Parks Commission?
Yes, through the, through the Chair. Um, our connectivity study included a lot of work on, um, on this location. So the desire was to have more connections from the Lower Moraine up, upper to, to the Upper Moraine. And the Parks was definitely supportive of doing something. They wanted to see, uh, uh, high-class... They wanted to see a high-class, you know, world-class accessible connection.
Are they supportive enough to contribute?
We haven't had those discussions, councillor.
Well, that's a question I'd be asking.
Councillor Neusteg.
Since this is as much a liability as it is access and everything else, I understand Nidhi's online. Can we go to her to get some legal advice about the liability of this staircase? Or path, whatever.
Hello, Ms. Binyarthy. If you could just unmute so that we can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any, anything more detailed with legal advice, I think I'll have to come back with an in-camera report. But there have been claims from slopes and falls around this area, is what I can say. There is signage, it isn't always effective, and our general manager of Minasville Works was correct in saying that we can do what we can, but there is always some degree of liability unless it's completely closed off and all access is blocked off to even the most able and eager person.
Okay, councillor. Okay. I have Mayor Diodati.
I'll be brief, Chair. Thanks for acknowledging me in the proper order. The only thing I do want to add is the Parks Commission does have some other announcements coming in the coming weeks, that there'll be some other advancements of some of the projects that may impact the Jolly Cut area. So I'm sure that they wouldn't even want to comment at this point until they know better. There's going to be some RFPs issued and they won't know how that comes back to them. So I think maybe, I am supporting this move because I think it might be premature. Thank you, Chair, once again. Appreciate it.
Councillor Carrio.
After hearing the mayor, could we just defer this until we see? Could we, yeah, but just defer it till we see because then we may want to bring it back, depending on what the parks does or doesn't do.
If I could, they, so there's going to be an announcement then with some RFPs, so it'll be sometime next year, so depending, but it won't be in the next little bit.
So if there aren't any other comments, then the motion is to defer this and I guess not move forward with the feasibility assessment. Everyone understands the motion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Councillor Dubrowski, are you in favor? Oh, he waved, okay.
I was in favor, yeah. Is my camera working? Thank you.
Okay, so that motion passes.
How do we know that's him and not an AI? It's not AI.
It's a good question. Okay. Back over to, back over to Mr. Dowling.
Thank you, Chair. Up next is councillor Neusteg's second amendment, if she would like to introduce it.
Sure, and thank you. It's the Stanford Cullum Barium capital improvement. So there was a motion or a capital improvement for a sprinkler, and I was asking that we also look at security in light of the different events that have taken place recently, but the staff assessment's saying that we don't need to have any existing funding. They have it, so it's going to be addressed. So I think it's pretty much covered, unless I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, through the chair, I guess I'll look for some clarification. I think perhaps we were saying there's no financial implication to this amendment. However, if we want to crystallize the amendment with no financial impact simply as a way of formalizing direction to staff, we could certainly do that.
Okay, then let's do that.
I'm going to let Mr. Burgess speak to it.
Yeah, either or, okay, okay. I'll, either way, if council, you know, if council wants to vote on it, that's fine, or we can just take it direction of staff, if that's the will of council, we can just deal with it.
Okay, well, let's make a motion to add the security improvements anyway, so, oh, councillor, sorry, Ms. Moldenhower.
Through to the chair, thank you. Staff are already implementing the security measures because we do have the dollars in the budget, and we know it's very important based on other incidents that have happened in other communities.
So we don't need a motion, it's done. Okay, thank you, that was easy.
Okay, so Mr. Dowling.
Next up, councillor Neusteg's last amendment here.
My third amendment is the parking redesign and capacity expansion for the exchange. A while back, I had brought up with the exchange, there is definitely a problem with our parking, and we have a beautiful design in the parking lot, but it really hinders the amount of people being able to park, and they're all over the place, which affects the usefulness of the exchange. So I'm asking if we could, I had asked, I did a motion that we could look at a redesign, so I'm just saying that I didn't see anything in the capital budget for the redesign and that we can make sure it's there and we can have a redesign come back.
Okay. I do have a secondary to the motion, seconded by councillor Strange. Are you taking this as direction of staff again?
Yeah, just a quick update. We had previously worked on a design, and the design, the costing just came in two days ago. Came in about a month ago, but we questioned the costing and the revised costing just came in. So it missed the capital budget timeline for it, so we can move forward with it. Because it's out of the reserves, though, we would not take it as direction. We would just want it passed and we'll initiate it because we do have to pull it from reserves. But staff's not opposed to this.
So we are going to take the motion then? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. It's been duly seconded. Staff have spoken in favor of it, so hopefully there's no other comments. I'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thanks, councillor Dubrowski. All right, Mr. Dowling.
Okay. That's it for councillors, councillor Neusteg's motions. Now councillor Patel still has two that we haven't yet spoken to yet, so perhaps we could start with the Center Street and Allen Avenue reconstruction amendment, councillor.
Mr. Chair, I put in amendment for deferral of the Center Street and Allen Avenue reconstruction because...
Sorry, did we do this one already?
No, that was a parking lot.
Yeah, we did it just slightly out of order. We started with this parking lot for improvement.
Well, I looked at the, when I looked at the budget, it was medium priority and it was on the list. That's the reason I actually did defer it. But after my deferral on the agenda, I got quite, I got at least three calls from the business owners on the Center Street and within the area who are not happy with the deferral because people are looking to move forward because it is something they're looking forward to, is updating the Center Street and Allen Avenue. And I think Mr. Nichol has the same opinion, so I would like to see what Mr. Nichol has to say.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, councillor. I mean, this is all part of us trying to accomplish the original Victoria Center Streetscape Master Plan. Allen Avenue has definitely exceeded its service life. It's in very rough shape, and Center Street has had its challenges with the festivals and events and one-ways and a number of things. So it's our intention to design both of those together and to gauge the BIA on the designs so there's satisfaction in what we're accomplishing. They're a little bit simpler, scaled down streetscaping-wise than Victorian Ferry Street, but nothing happens without a design in hand. So we want to get moving on those designs, and we wanted to slot those into future capital budgets with greater certainty in the designs and the geotechnical and all the infrastructure that needs to go in within them. So that deferral will unfortunately push the construction of those projects back a further season instead of twenty-seven and twenty-eight, to look at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and, you know, things will start to unravel in terms of the pavement condition, all those things in that period of time. Yeah, so in terms of our prioritization, third-party funding gives you extra support, regulatory requirements, so is there, you know, is there a water main that's going to break as a combined sewer, that'll get you extra support. The reality is, this project has very good reasons to be funded, that's why it made the cut, but there's a lot of other projects that have layers of extra risk and extra third-party engagement. You know, simply being an asset management-driven project with all those other priorities layered on top sometimes isn't enough to push it all the way up. You know, we're still in the refinement process of our prioritization. It's consensus building around the projects. You can see it's a hundred and seven out of a hundred and eighteen, and, you know, we have some other streets that, like Ferguson Street and Silver Town, didn't quite make it, even though that's a high priority as well. So it's this balancing act that we're trying to do to get these projects funded. I really can't say much more than that, councillor.
I just have one question, that since this street is part of the tourism corp, would that be the qualifying project to get funding from MAT-TAX?
Through the chair, I'll start that answer. Unfortunately, in this case, because it's essentially reconstruction of an existing asset, if you will, I don't think it's going to meet the muster of sort of the guiding principles that we're using for applying our MAT-TAX. A lot of that funding is supposed to be geared towards, you know, tourism attractors, if you will. And so I think it'll be a tougher argument. I appreciate the location is prime in that regard, but I don't know that there's quite enough elements of this that would pass that test, but I'll defer to Mr. Nichol in case I've been spoken.
Yeah, thanks. And to the councillor, you know, we really don't know the ultimate scope until we complete the design and have the BIA's buy-in. We've accomplished a lot with partnership funding from the Victoria Center BIA, and in fact, several hundred thousand dollars invested in upscaling the lighting and upscaling the type of street furniture and those sort of things. So the way we traditionally approach it is that we provide a base level of service and the BIA adds to the enhanced level and enhanced look of those areas. We would look at that traditional approach, but also try to take advantage of MAT-TAX dollars as they might become available based on the new regime that we're anticipating. But I think we have a better chance of securing some BIA funding and support and to enhance that versus the MAT-TAX right now.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I actually, since I spoke to those three business owner, what we do here, we do work for the people and the business owners in the city, and if they're not happy with the decisions, then I'm not going to move forward with it, so I will take that motion back, that amendment back.
Okay, so amendment number two, no more. Okay. So we move to our last amendment.
That's correct. So councillor Patel, this is the roadway design and soil investigation amendment.
For this amendment, my only justification was that moving that hundred thousand dollars to the Millen pave road budget, because this will be reallocated to the funds eventually in the future anyways, that's why it's easier to take it from OLG funds, that will be reallocated in the future. So it gives hundred thousand dollars more to fix our roads. So that was my rationale for this. So maybe Mr. Nichol or someone can, or maybe Mr. Dowling's in common.
Let me get a secondary first of the motion, and have a secondary by councillor Baldinelli. And then maybe I can ask Mr. Nichol if this project was deferred, how it would affect the city.
Sorry. Yeah, I might actually ask our finance team to explain. This seems a bit more like a finance funding support question.
Okay.
Yeah, so through the chair, just to ensure I understand it properly, I think what the councillor's trying to achieve here is simply just suggesting that we use OLG funding to support this project rather than using the capital levy allocation that was suggested in the capital budget. I'm understanding the interpretation of that being that, you know, it'll free up funding that right now, and you saw in the capital budget presentation, we're directing a lot of that capital levy funding towards roads. So I think the councillor's vision with this is to, you know, essentially create a little bit more capacity there that we could invest in the future in roads by using OLG money instead. Is that correct?
Do we allocate funds from the OLG reserves to roads as well?
Through the chair, it varies, I'll be honest. You know, we have to date used the capital levy as a primary source, and we've supplemented that with sources such as, you know, the Candid Community Building Fund and some other grants. There's no restrictions on the OLG funds. Typically in the past, when we've used OLG funding, we try to gear it towards, you know, some of the strategic investments, less so on the asset management front, but by no means is that necessarily a restriction of the use. It's just sort of in practice how we've approached the investment plan for OLG.
So through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dowling, what would you suggest? Is that the right move? What would you suggest?
Through the chair, you know, I'll be honest with you, that given the dollars involved, it doesn't make a really large impact one way or the other. The rationale that we used for suggesting capital levy funding initially is because this program essentially is what gives us the details and the scope that we need to undertake the following year's roads program. So we saw it as a direct connection to the roads program, and that was the thought process behind assigning capital levy funding to it. But that being said, we're happy to go with the will of council because in this case, the dollars involved aren't very material for us, for it to really alter, you know, have any negative consequences, if you will.
Okay, and I already have you moving it, and I have councillor Baldinelli seconding it. Do I have any questions or comments of the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call that vote. All those in favor? Opposed? With one opposed. So the motion's carried. So Mr. Dowling, we are done, our, sorry, Mr. Dowling. Yes, sorry, Mr. Dowling. Sorry. I don't know why I called him that. It's getting late. There's too many, there's too many beeps and there's too many beeps in the meeting. But we're done the amendments now, so I think staff are going to take a few moments and kind of update the capital budget, that's what I'm told.
That's correct. So Ms. Clark has been keeping track of the amendments throughout the night. As you're aware, that first recommendation on the agenda for the report referenced the dollar value of, the gross dollar value of the capital budget. So we simply just wanted to kind of provide a really quick summary of what that number's going to look like encompassing all of the discussion and decisions this evening with these amendments.
And I think council's going to take a break while you're doing that, so are we looking at five, 10 minutes?
Perfect.
Ten? Okay. Darling? Darling? Someone shut it off. So I'll go back to Mr. Dowling, and I'll ask him if he can, Mr. Darling. Mr. Darling. See, what happened was I was looking at Shelley Darlington's name, and then he stopped talking. And I called him Mr. Darling, right? That's what happened. Yeah, 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 it's a good one. But that's what happened. Okay, so I'll go back to Mr. Dowling, and I'll ask him if he could update us in regards to recommendation number one. So if everyone goes on their agenda, actually, I think, are you going to put it up top there?
Correct, so...
The recommendations?
Oh, I wasn't planning to actually list the recommendations on screen. Yeah, perhaps Ms. Clark could do that here.
Oh, you have the amendments up there, I see. Okay. Okay, sure, if you want to go over them?
Yeah, so I'll really, at a high level, really quickly highlight, so as councils aware, recommendation one for the report had a total 2026 mayor's proposed capital budget of $78,493,531. Outlined on this summary that Ms. Clark helped us keep track of throughout the meeting is the results of the amendments. So you'll see that in total, there was a net reduction of $25,000. That's due to the $100,000 removal of the Jolly Cut Investigation Project and the addition of the parking redesign project for $75,000. So now the 2026 mayor's proposed capital budget as amended should read $78,468,531.
Okay, and if everyone can go to the very first link that's underneath 3.2, then you can see the six recommendations that we're going to be looking at. That's part of staff's report. So number one just says that council receive the mayor's proposed 2026 capital budget totaling, and then Mr. Dowling just gave us the number. It's exactly the same, minus 25,000.
Correct. Ms. Clark has put it on screen for everybody's benefit as well.
Okay, and there's number one, there's number one as amended there. And then you can see recommendations two, three, four, five, and six. So either looking for discussion or looking for a motion on these six recommendations. Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. More of a question. When I look at those six, there's, I don't see something to approve or not approve the budget. The one, the first one is to receive, and then the other ones are about attachment one, attachment two, attachment three, four, the budget amendments adding capitals, special purpose reserves. Where is the actual approval of the budget?
Yeah, I'll let Ms. Clark answer that for us.
Thank you, through the chair. That's a great question. So with the strong mayor's powers, it actually changed, so when the budget is presented before February 1st, it's the mayor's budget, it's not council's budget. So council actually doesn't approve the budget. Council's given the opportunity for the 30-day review period to propose amendments. Those can be voted on, as we just saw, with the majority of council. Following that, there's the 10-day veto period where the mayor can choose, if he'd like, to veto any of council's successful amendments. And then if the mayor did use a veto, council would have that 15-day override period where two-thirds of a majority of council would have to override the mayor's veto. So all said and done, once we shorten those periods, if the mayor raves his veto, the budget is simply viewed as deemed adopted. There's no longer a vote by council to approve the budget, and this came into effect in 2023.
Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last year, I remember voting or not voting on it. I know it was strong mayor's, but we did vote against it or for it. Did we do it different last year?
Through the chair, I don't believe we did it any differently for capital. I do get council to still approve the actual tax levy amount when we do the levy budget. So maybe that's the confusion. So whereas the whole budget in levy is, say, whatever, 140 million, and the tax levy piece is 95 million, I do have a motion on that budget for council to approve specifically the levy amount. But we don't have an overall motion anymore to approve any of the budgets with the strong mayor power. It would come into play if we were to table the budget after February 1st, then it would be council's budget.
Okay, but you are looking for motions one to six?
Right.
And then we'll do seven. So are there any other questions, Council Kerrio?
I should move it.
Okay, are you moving one to six?
Absolutely.
Okay, do I have a second or to that motion? Seconded by Council Baldinelli. Any questions to the motion? Council LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For number two, if we can pull number two, that's the staffing requirement, so I'm opposed to that.
You want to vote on that separately?
Yes, please.
Okay. Are there any other questions or any other amendments? So if not, then what we'll do is we'll vote on one, three, four, five, and six first, and then we'll go back and we'll vote on number two. So we have a motion that's been made by Council Kerrio, seconded by Council Baldinelli, and this would be for recommendations one, three, four, five, and six. I'll call that vote now. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried unanimously. We'll go back to recommendation number two, and I have a motion by Council Kerrio, seconded by Council Baldinelli, to approve the new staffing request identified in attachment one. I'll call that vote now. All those in favor? Opposed? With one opposed. Okay? Thank you. If you move down the page, you'll see recommendation number seven. And since we went through the amendments already, if we're satisfied with the amendments, then what we should do is we should shorten the 30-day review period so that the mayor can then have a look at what he's going to do with his veto powers. And then we can have the final budget approved faster. So if we're looking for a motion to shorten it, motion by Council Kerrio, seconded by Council Strange. If there aren't any questions, I'll call that vote. All those in favor? Opposed? With one opposed? Okay. So since the budget has been deemed adopted, we now move into the 10-day veto period. And so I will go to the mayor and ask whether or not you would consider shortening your 10-day veto period by 10 days, by providing written documentation to members of council and to the municipal clerk, that your veto period will end on November 25th, 2025.
Would you call me darling?
Would you say? Gorgeous?[1464.71][1464.71](Laughter)
Yes, I will.
Yes, you will.
I will.
Okay, that's great. So we can deem the capital budget adopted then at this point. And then you will give written notification to the municipal clerk and to city council. So thanks, everyone. The capital budget is now done. And so under reports, we're going to be going on to 4.1 MW 2025-26. This deals with a capital prioritization framework, and I believe Mr. Nichol is going to be introducing it. Before he does, I want everyone to look at number 14 on this chart. Number 14, that's a great one. I tell you, we got a real high score on that one. So number 14, so... And the laughs start coming in when you get there. Okay, so goes to show you how important we are. All right. So I'll pass it over to Mr. Nichol.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We've actually introduced some of this already. The contents of the report are fairly self-explanatory, that we embarked on this collaborative prioritization to try to level the playing field and provide some qualitative metrics on which projects might be more important than others. I'm happy to answer any questions if council has any.
Okay, questions at council? Council Patel, Council Kerrio?
Through, Mr. Chair. Mr. Nichol, would you please address what the political factor is, the project addresses, the political and strategic meeting priority?
Yeah, thank you, and through the chair. This one was not assigned points, but it was something that when we collaborated on the 150-plus projects, we could screen by projects that might have an other factor. We know it's the mayor's budget, and we know that staff are working on putting these projects forward. And in some cases, they don't actually tick the boxes because we don't have enough fields to create all the boxes necessary. So we put this sort of other factor in there that we could just use to help screen and identify if there's any reasons why we may want to be a bit more sensitive or adjust our prioritization. I think that's all I can say, Mr. ...
Through, Chair. My interpretation, my understanding was, is, for example, like, you know, we have provincial government right now, they have priorities. So is that how it goes? Because provincial priority, are we focusing on provincial priority sometimes in some projects?
It's normally a municipal priority, so, but sometimes they overlap with provincial or federal priorities. So I'll give a couple of examples. Something to do with the hospital, if there was some type of project because there was a delay, we know that's a strategic priority of this council. That might get a little bit more higher ranking. Housing is a strategic priority of this council. You know, that might get a little bit more ranking. So that's really what it was there for. It might not score out, you know, there might not be additional funding for government sources. It might score a bit lower there, but we know it's a priority that, you know, that this council's going to want to support. So we put it in there so that flags at the staff that, yeah, we got to take a serious look at this.
Council Kerrio.
I'm happy to move the report. Mr. Chairman, I think it's a great report.
Yeah.
And it's 100 times better than the old method.
Right, exactly. I like the fact that we have a matrix and we can go back and look at the scoring.
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe, the old method.
The staff evaluated different projects. I agree with you. Okay, so I have a motion made by Council Kerrio, seconded by Council LaCoco. If there aren't any other comments?
Recommendation in there, as I said earlier, how we will be getting data from CRM system, what customers are calling in. Maybe we can get the counselors who wants to put in there what they hear. It's not a political pressure. It's just like, for example, if I'm hearing that Queen Street needs redoing, Queen Street has some problems, I just want to weigh it in, just let the staff know as a data, nothing else. It's not a political power steering and not political pressure, it's just giving in as a data. So they have something to fall back on to see what's going on in the city. We are the eyes of the city too, right? People do come to us with concerns, so we just want to tell them what the concerns are. Just give them the data, that's it.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, if there aren't any other comments, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thanks. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, would anyone like an item pulled? If not, then looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda made by the mayor, seconded by Council Baldinelli. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Looking for a motion to introduce the bylaws made by the mayor, seconded by Council Patel, that the bylaws be given a first, second, and third reading. I'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.
No. Yes.
I do?
Yes.[1770.21][1770.21](Laughter)
A motion to adjourn the meeting made by Council Dubrowski, seconded by Council Newisteg. All those in favor? Thank you.